All right, once again, today is Wednesday, July the 12th, 2023. This committee of finance, diversity, equity, and inclusion is reconvened. I'm going to bring up human resources and then we'll go into health because I know health has been patiently waiting as well. So we'll go to human resources and then we'll come back and go to health if we could, okay? All right, thank you. Hello, Ms. Long?
Good morning.
All right, this is ordinance number 630-2023 as amended by council member...oh, this is...no, not this one. That's not the one I'm looking for. Hold on.
It's on your list, Richard.
Yeah, but that's...we gotta wait for something on that. I'm gonna go to ordinance number 679-2023 by council member Griffin by departmental request and emergency ordinance authorizing the director of human resources or other appropriate director to apply for and accept one or more grants from the Cleveland Foundation to place approximately five public service fellows in various departments for a period of one year. Ms. Long?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and council members. This piece is to accept a grant from the Cleveland Foundation to support the salary and benefits for five public service fellows for their salaries and benefits. This is actually a joint initiative between the mayor's office and the Department of Human Resources. I have with me Abigail Pasky, who is the strategic manager for this initiative, to provide you some scope and background and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Pasky.
Thank you, Council President. This is an extension of the program that we have run this past year. The fellows are wrapping up their term this Friday. We had 12 of them this past year in departments across the city, and the Cleveland Foundation has offered us funding to support five in the upcoming year.
Awesome, okay. When would they be starting about?
August 1st is their start date, assuming that we are able to accept this grant.
And are they just gonna be in the administration side, or don't I recall that we used to have a few on our side, too?
Yep, this past year you had two in council, and council did not request additional fellows this upcoming year.
How did that...did we miss a window, or how did it happen before?
It was a conversation with Jessica Columbia. I was not part of it with the Cleveland Foundation, so you might want to check with her.
Okay, I'll follow up with Ms. Columbia and see what's going on because I thought that was a good pipeline that we were dealing with, but let me follow up and see what happened. And when did the proposal go in?
It was kind of an extension from the past year, so we did not have to officially apply.
Reason I'm asking that is because is it too late to apply or too late to try to add to?
That's a question for Jessica. I think that...
We'll give Jessica...she'll give us conversation, but I just didn't know if it was a window or not. Okay, any conversations or questions regarding ordinance number 679-12...2023? Yes?
Just briefly, if...this might play... Mr. Chair, if the ordinance says listed the five departments at the head, would it be as simple as just making the amendment and say that one of the departments at the head could be a council?
I think that is probably what we might be able to do, but I want to understand what was the reasoning that we did not do in the first place. But I think that's what I'm thinking, is that we could just amend the ordinance just to add two. But I do want to understand why we didn't do the two. It must be a reason. I don't think she just would turn them down. Is it...you got any other questions on that, councilwoman?
No.
Me, councilman, okay. Anyone else have any questions regarding 679-2023? Seeing no other questions, ordinance number 679-2023 stands approved. Please sign on. Thank you. We're gonna wait for a minute on 630-2023. There's something that I need a conversation between a couple of people to have. The chief financial officer is going to be meeting with a couple of my council members, so we'll get back to 630 if we could, okay? Okay, health. Where's health at? Kimberly, we got all health together? I don't see it. All right, let me look. I got 580, 683, 84, 87. Hold on one second, everybody. Let me get this together.
670 is Councilman Hairston, not this?
For some reason, I don't see health in the box. Hold on, let me see. Oh, here it is. I had it buried, that's why. Okay, health. We'll start out with ordinance number 670-2023 as amended by council member Anthony...council member Hairston and emergency ordinance to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new section 263.05 county land...county land reutilization corporation exempted related to fees or examination of plans and applications for the issuance of permits, variances, and for the original inspection and permit to operate for the installation and modification of any air contaminant source or control equipment. Director, Councilman Hairston, did you have anything to add to this ordinance that you are introducing?
Yes.
And I'll read the amendment as well, if I could. The amendment says there is no legal objection to this legislation if amended as follows. In the title...number one, in the title, line four, after 263.05, strike the comma and insert relating to Cuyahoga, and strike lines five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 in their entirety, and insert exempted. Number two, in the second whereas clause, line one, strike fees any, and insert fees for asbestos regulation on the Cuyahoga. Number three, in section one, at new section 263.05, in the title section before county, insert Cuyahoga, strike lines two and three in their entirety, and insert no fees shall be demanded from the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Program under the provisions of section 263.01 A6 for the regulation of asbestos-containing materials in any building structures in the city that is owned by the county...the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization. Okay, fine.
Mr. Chair, either of you can call and report.
Here you go.
So, we need more fees here than...discussing, talking about the public health department, also other departments within the city of Cleveland right now, which will be scheduled by individual or institutions, have to pay, will do certain work in the city of Cleveland, be able to cut a land bank. Cut a land bank is a great work, still, so I'm trying my best. As we will continue to do many great things on behalf of the city of Cleveland, and there has been discussions over a period of time regarding certain fee, this is the charge for the land bank, for notices that, as we see, are given, related to certain building, crazy buildings that there's such problems throughout the city of Cleveland. And when we're looking here to do today, it's exempting that they have such fee, and I also, basically, as well, because modern works, county administration, not county administration, county land maker does it behalf of the city of Cleveland as well. So, I see the amendment here related to fully, in buildings, structures, related to the county land maker, but that will be the purpose of also trying to protect the city of Cleveland as well, and they are also doing the same work on behalf of the city of Cleveland, as they are doing now, including these great properties that they are managing, raising costs across the city of Cleveland. So, this is the person who I'm seeing this amendment, and so I really, you know, just looking at this, you know, I'm not being proud to support them, and I would rather see the fees go forward as is, and just remind all the state of the body that although, you know, these are...these are important, however, you know, our relationship, great work that the county land maker is doing for all of us, the city will be in much deeper trouble through that, as we're working out what we have across every part of the city. People be in deep trouble, so to continue to, you know, tax these small dollar fees that can come out to be a large dollar now because of the amount of work that we're across the city of Cleveland, you know, this would be something to change some of the ways that we, in fact, charge fees for the county land bank based on our current structure that we have through the public health department.
Thank you, councilman. And for a point of clarification here, were these amendments provided after the introduction of the original piece?
Yes.
Okay, so then these would have to be voted in anyway. So, these are not a part of the...unless they were a part of the original piece, without council action, they're not incorporated in the piece.
Correct.
So, is your preference, councilman, that they be...they not be included in the legislation?
In my thoughts, that they would not be included in the legislation.
Okay. Do I have any other questions or comments on 670-2023?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilman?
It's good monetary...
When...can the chair, when can I ask the chapter?
To the council member, relating to, have a discussion or conversation with the amendments.
So, the amendments were from the legal review from the administration, just to make it, I think, enforceable was the concept there. I don't think it takes away from the spirit of what you're trying to do, but Councilman Hairston and I have talked about this legislation, so I'd have to defer that to the...our legal team over there, where I see him. I see him over there.
Assistant Law Director, would you like to comment on this ordinance? If you do, come up to the mic, please.
No, none of the mic work down there.
Y'all real loud. You can come over here.
You stepchildren.
If we stepchildren down here, we could be getting over the spread.
Listen.
I love my stuff.
Yeah, yeah. All right, to our Assistant Law Director, so these amendments were provided after the introduction of the original piece. Can you speak at all to the amendments?
No, I was not involved to them with the amendment.
All right, we're gonna move forward to this ordinance without the amendments. Is there any further conversation on 670-2023 not as amended, but as in its original form? Hearing none, 670-2023 in its original form is approved. Please sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I can add just one thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Most we can get through this process would be the need that needs to be cleaned up. We can always bring it back to the cleanup, but I see this a lot, though.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, could we record that without the amendments, please? Thank you. Ordinance 680...thank you. Ordinance 680-2023 by council members Conwell and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the director of public health to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health for the continuation of the Cleveland Office of Minority Health. Director?
Thank you, Chair, and I will introduce Commissioner Francis Mills, Commissioner Health, and I hand her this microphone.
Commissioner, good afternoon. Good to see you, as always.
Good afternoon. This is simply an opportunity for us to accept funds from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health for the continuation of services provided through the local office, but more so to introduce to you our new director of the Office of Minority Health, Mr. Rafiq Ali. And so we'll take this opportunity for you to ask any questions about the Office of Minority Health, but give you an opportunity to say hello to Ms. Ali.
Thank you so much. Commissioner, welcome. Happy to have you on board. If you'd like to just give an opening about yourself and anything else you'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am Rafiq Ali. Originally, I started at the Cleveland Health Department as a food safety professional, but through Commissioner Francis Mills' experience and wanting me to come on, I'm grateful for that. So now I'm trans...excuse me, I'm transitioning into my role as director of the Cleveland Office of Minority Health, and I just look to build upon the wonderful work that Commissioner Mills has done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and you got a challenge because Commissioner Mills has been a rock star in that position. So you got your...you got some big shoes to fill, my friend. Okay, so this is a grant to help fund 52,500 a year from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health. Is there a local match on this, Commissioner or Director?
Well, there is the salary position that's funded through general fund, and so we use the 52.5 for media, for any programming needs that we have over the course of the year.
Got it, but we're not required to put any money specifically for this.
It's 20% match that's required by the state, but the city does more.
Got it, based on the salary. Okay, great. What questions do we have on a $52,500 grant from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health? Councilman Conwell?
Can I get a background story of the new commissioner, Mr. Wilson, again? Rafiq, can you give us a background story? You know, I worked with, you know, Francis forever and called each other when this issue started, Commissioner Minority Health, building any minority issues, she's out there working in community. You gave us a little bit of background story about your sector, you, you know, any college, anything with the fatherhood movement, anything, working with Minority Man Movement or anything like that, any activism movement?
Thank you, Councilman, for the question, and to be quite direct, I do not have any experience in this, other than to say that I am African-American, and I am deeply passionate about the job at hand and the task at hand. So I'm willing to submit myself under the tutelage of Commissioner Francis Mills, and I'm sure that she'll provide the proper guidance.
All right, you know, she's good to the chair, to Francis Mills, Commissioner. You know me, you've been knowing me for a while, and you know that this is Commissioner of Minority Health. Now, I led this, this is years ago, and we need...you were very, very active, you fit right into this, I'm not saying you're wrong, but you gave me a little bit of ease when you started doing this. You're gonna work with them and everything, right? Introduce them to...I'm sorry, but I'm trying to...it means a lot, too, to the key stakeholders, Monlen, NDLSCP, and have you went outstate together, you took it outstate. Do we still have Commissioner of Minority Health?
Yes.
Instead of Columbus, and you're gonna head down there so that you can talk with them, meet with them about grants, or whatever the case may be. We can see now it's too far.
He's had his first call with...first meeting with the director and the other minority health directors across the state, and so we meet monthly, and so he'll have an opportunity to get acclimated to just the procedural things that he will need to know in terms of reporting and working with the evaluator and moving forward the program, and then the rest over the next six months will be working with him as well as Commissioner And then the rest, over the next six months, will be working with him as well as Commissioner Lita Wills, which is where the office is going to go under, the program is going to go under that division. So we'll collectively all be working to get him oriented, and one of the first orders of business is that he's already expressed an interest in men's health, and so definitely can connect him with Dr. Mottlin, Dr. Greg Hall, Dr. Randy Vince, and he'll be attending the African American Men's Wellness Walk in August, so he's, he'll be underway.
All right, good, good. Al Brian, Mr. Reston, you know how to keep players, you know, with the system. She was an activist before she ever worked for the city of Cleveland, out of the community. To my colleagues, never ever, she didn't have grand care. Francis would come and work with us in the neighborhood. As soon as the job is completed, you turn around and look for her, guess what? It's a job. It's a job. Work is done. It's impressive. It's done. No grand care or whatever the case may be. A true activist can, when I see her, I just smile because I love her work. So that's the lady right there. That's the lady. She's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, and I think this is the way the system should work. You do a great job, you promote it, right? I mean, that's the way the system should work, but Director, with the Councilman's permission, I'd recommend you reach out to him to sit down with him. Well, some information for years, I think a really good person for you to, you know, really get to know. So do I have additional questions on 680 2023? Hearing non, 680 2023 stands approved. Congratulations, Director. Ordinance number 687 2023 by councilmembers Conwell and Griffin by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Health to apply for an accepted grant from the Ohio Department of Public Health for the 2023-24 Cities Readiness Initiative Program, authorizing one or more contracts with various agencies, entities, or individuals, and authorizing the purchase or lease of television and radio advertising time and other media, Director.
I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Francis Mills.
Well, this one is an easy one as well. It's just simply to accept funds for the continuation of this program. I will say, just in general, emergency preparedness is one of those things that is really not visible, but you're so glad that you have it when events happen in the community. Most recently, you know, of all the work that we've done and continue to do with respect to COVID, much of that work has been led by Tommy Doot, our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, and so these next two pieces of, of legislation, he will speak to if you have any questions, but we're so glad that this work is being done, and anytime there's a major event in the city, our emergency preparedness collaborates with all of the other offices of emergency management, both within the city and the county, and so our voice is heard, and he's done an exceptional job in terms of preparing us internally and interfacing with the community externally. So Tommy can speak to any questions that you might have on these next two pieces.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is a 95,000, a little over $95,000 grant from Ohio Department of Health. Is there a local requirement, match requirement for this grant? Call us again, my apologies.
Tommy Doot.
Doot?
Doot, D-O-O-T.
Okay, Mr. Doot.
Yes. So 7.7% is required with the, both CRI and the other piece of legislation, FEP. We are matching more than the 7.7% because my position has now been moved over to the general fund.
Got it, got it. Okay, so the position serves as the local piece. Appreciate that. Does this have anything to do with the COVID ads that you see on TV? Are those a part of this, or is that something different? I see the Cleveland Department of Public Health vaccination ads, so Commissioner!
Well, that-
Get some props for your good work.
Uh, that, that, those dollars come actually from three places. We have COVID-specific dollars that we've used for the Spectrum ads, and then we've used Office of Minority Health dollars for ads as well, and so we work with Radio One, Spectrum, a number of vendors, La Mega, to make sure that information gets out in the community and to keep up with the reminder that COVID is still out there. The public emergency has gone away, but we want people to continue to get boosted since our booster rate is so low, so.
I gotta check myself when I, if I need a booster. I gotta, I haven't looked at that in a while. Probably not the great example here. Dr. Margulies, I'll call you after this. Councilman Conwell, this is to be routed through Health and Human Services. Do you have any thoughts on funding for the Cities Readiness Initiative Program?
I'm okay with it. Very, very good. I talked about a lot of the issues yesterday, and I would say, I think we're in good hands also with the Director of Health. He and I walked, how many hours did we walk yesterday talking? Three hours, three hours. Met me at my house, and we walked, and we talked in the neighborhood, and discussed a lot of issues and concerns. With that, we'll continue to talk, walk and talk.
Thank you, Councilman.
So, um, no, no issues.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilman Mike Palencia.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues. What type of, is there any connection or interaction with EMS pertaining to this specific piece of legislation?
So with regards to this specific information, legislation, no. We serve on a number of the same boards, such as the Cuyahoga County Emergency Services Advisory Board. We have much interaction between us and the Office of Emergency Management, who also works with Division of EMS, but not, not anything directly to do with this legislation.
Okay. Saturday night was a wake-up call because there were four ambulances browned out, a total of 15 running EMS units, and the shooting tied up 10 units. There are only five units left to cover the entire city. So when it was brought to my attention, not only in this case, but I started to think, what if we had a much larger tragedy or event, what would we do for emergency medical response? So what I'm saying to the administration, and I'm going to bring this up officially, also it's safety, do we have a requirement contract, or will we, would we consider a requirement contract where we could bring in private ambulance companies to augment our existing service? I'm, I'm not aware of any fatality out in the neighborhoods as a result of everybody being tied up Saturday night, but it, but what it said to me was, this might be the wake-up call, or maybe this should be the wake-up call, for us to be able to, if need be, call in outside services, outside ambulance to augment and support our EMS. So I, whoever can respond to that.
Commissioner, whoever. Sure, so to the Chair, to the Councilman, Saturday night EMS was there within four minutes. I think we all heard that, and they did an incredible job stepping up.
They did.
And they always do. I mean, they really always do. So our team does lead tabletop exercises across the region, and I think that's a good question for a safety committee, just in terms of what those MOUs look like. We have the same MOUs with our local public health departments in the area so that we can serve each other in the case of a public health emergency.
So I, I just think it raises, raises questions. It started to make me think of a much larger event, what would we do if all of our units were tied up? So I'm, I'm going to, I'm posing that to you officially as a Director, which I hope you'll take back to the administration. I'm also going to pose it at the safety table as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Very good, very good questions. We'll look forward to that follow-up. Do I have additional questions on 687 2023? Hearing non, 687 2023 is approved. As a reminder, please sign every committee that you sit on. Thank you. Ordinance number 688 2023 by councilmembers Conwell and Griffin by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Health to apply for an accepted grant for the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, from the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program. Proceed.
Yep, so this is D-O-O-T.
Oh, my gosh, I'm messing this up. Mr. Doot.
Thank you.
So essentially, the same larger pot of money with regards to emergency preparedness. This is coming from Cuyahoga County Board of Health, who we provide the services for the FEP side of the House within City of Cleveland to Cuyahoga County Board of Health. So we contract with CCBH to receive the funding through the grant deliverables for emergency preparedness. The goals of both of these grants are almost identical. CRI focuses mostly on medical countermeasures and dispensing, whereas Public Health Emergency Preparedness, this legislation focuses much more on emergency preparedness writ large.
Okay. What questions do I have on a grant from Cuyahoga County also for, for the Emergency Preparedness Grant Program?
Yeah, you know, put it down.
Councilman Conwell?
Here's a question with emergency preparedness. Um, are you guys, you mentioned goals, but you need objectives also. The goals lean into the objectives. So you're reaching out to what key stakeholders, to the chair, to your manager, you're the project manager of it. All right, so what key stakeholders are you for emergency preparedness? Are you going to the rec centers? Are you going to the schools? Are you talking with workers, uh, city workers about it? What? Through the chair.
So through the chair, to the councilperson. A lot of the identification of goals and objectives is set at the federal level, so we have a number of capabilities that must be met in order to certify that we are prepared and ready when it comes to emergency preparedness. Those capabilities are identified by a number of subtasks and skills that we assign to specific drills, tabletop exercises, functional exercises, train those, and identify where we have gaps in those specific capabilities and where we can further improve those specific capabilities. When it comes to the stakeholders we're engaging with, what we saw from COVID-19 was we have to work through a whole of government, working with not only our partners within the City of Cleveland, EMS, police, fire, airport, fire, we also have to work with rec centers and community development corporations, all sorts of, of partner organizations. So those, we are discussing with those partners how we can better prepare the community. A lot of that is happening in after-action reports and improvement plans through COVID-19 as are required by the state legislation, the state grant that we just discussed earlier. Ohio Department of Health has a number of deliverables that require us to meet with key stakeholders to be able to discuss after actions for COVID-19 and how we can apply those to something like a 24-hour no-notice point of dispensing that would be initiated for something like a terrorist attack, a biological terrorist attack. So those types of stakeholders are being discussed with, and that's, but to get to your point, the objectives are really identified at the federal level, and how we enact those objectives and how we get after those objectives is what we're doing with the stakeholders to be able to meet the needs of the community while also meeting the federal requirements.
You know, a good tool to use is the Code Red in our, in our system, as well as just the reverse 911 that we use to call seniors. You know, click that, Code Red. Also, Councilmember Mike Palencia just mentioned, when we, you just narrated, you talked about gaps, okay? He talked about a gap also there, so I think we need to take a look at that. Exactly, we have five, 15 EMS vehicles, five vehicles is working on one event, and then other things go crazy, so we have to look at that also for lessons learned. To the chair, what do you think?
Through the chair, to the council. As far as, as far as the EMS response, I won't speak to what Department of Public Safety is necessarily doing with, with their after-action report or improvement plan. We, within the Public Health Department, as part of emergency preparedness, have medical surge procedures with hospital networks. So within Northeast Ohio, we have the Northeast Ohio Healthcare Coalition. That's one of those boards that, or one of those coalitions that we work with EMS on. So that is another piece that we discuss with regularly to be able to talk through in the event that there is something huge that, that occurs. How do we ensure that bed availability in hospitals is, is routed the right way? How are, how are EMS ambulances getting to the right locations to be able to drop off patients where they can be seen and they can be taken? So those, those plans and procedures are in place, and they are constantly through a refinement process, as is, is any really response that we have at the Health Department or any place that uses after-action reports as, as a process.
Yeah, it's correlated with safety. Just listen to Councilmember Mike Palencia, you mentioned health and safety. Some cities even have committees, this joint health and safety committee, it's a core leader. See, the other key stakeholders are those, and I talked with your boss about it, the Director. When you visit the districts, First District, Second District, Third District, Fifth District, you hear people in your, which are your key stakeholders, they're your bosses also, they always get around to help. When you visit the Fifth District, they talk about safety, but then you get around to help also because they're correlated, and I think visiting with them can help us out with the preparedness. Because they're your audience, and they come in for that, and they have, and some of the, well, let's say a lot of them, they're, uh, street club presidents, block club presidents, and they meet the people on the ground, and that would be a great audience.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you. Any additional questions on 688 2023? Councilwoman Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I simply, I don't have a question. Since we're on two different emergency management pieces, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Public Health Department for participating in the rail safety hearing that council held in March, and your contributions were, were really enlightening, and I was not aware prior to that, that public health had this body of work in terms of coordination for emergency preparedness and response, so really appreciate that ongoing work, and just wanted to mention that today. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman. Director?
Thank you. I'll just say, on behalf of the department, we're so grateful for Tommy Doot's leadership in this space. He was one of the co-leaders of our response to the monkeypox epidemic a year ago. He helped us through the air quality emergency two weeks ago, and just his professionalism, when I came from Metro Health, everybody at Metro Health and the hospital system knew our emergency preparedness person. He works with the Department of Homeland Security, they, they know about him, so we're just really lucky to work with him, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, really, thank you for your service, really appreciate it, on behalf of our residents. Ordinance 688 2023 is approved, please sign. Thank you. Think I'm done with you all? Port Control, come on up. 678 2023. Thank you. By councilmembers McCormick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into one or more amendments to lease agreement number LS 202317 with Air Canada to increase the lease premise at Cleveland-Hopkins International Airport, and you're sitting in for the Director today?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, 678, please. Kick us off.
678. So this is just, Air Canada is just looking to add some, they, they are a non-signatory airline at CLE. They do currently have space in the form of ticket counters, and they're just looking to add more space, and this is just a small room for them.
So we're just-
To add to their existing lease hold.
All righty. Councilwoman McCormick, have this been through transportation? Yes, thank you. We support this legislation. Do I have questions on 678 2023, increasing Air Canada's ticket space at Hopkins? Hearing non, 678 2023 is approved, please sign. 681 2023 by councilmember McCormick and Griffin by departmental request, emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into an absolute triple-net lease. You're going to tell us what that is. Agreement with South Shore Cable Construction, Inc., or its designated for a certain property located at 6400 Cuthoff, Cuthoff Road in the city of Brook Park, for the purpose of supporting their general business and light industrial manufacturing for a term of two years, with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Department of Port Control.
So this, this is a new lease, this, they however have had this lease since 2009. The term has expired. As far as a triple-net lease, a triple-net lease means you're responsible for all costs, meaning if there's property taxes, any, any, any ongoing cost with the facility, it falls on you. So we collect rent, and you take on all the costs of the facility. We typically do that if, if it's off-airport of one of our buildings, and we're just looking to enter a new lease because their term had ended.
Thank you so much. Sounds like a good deal for us. This is, and, and these are the folks that have been on the property, using it?
Correct.
And they are a good tenant, they pay on time?
They pay timely, and we've had no issues, and they've been with us since 2009.
Since 2009, okay. And then the proposed annual amount, is that established by fair market value, or how is that established?
Correct. So when we, when we enter a new lease, and after so many years, we always- So when we, uh, when we enter a new lease and after so many years, we always get an appraisal and based on the appraisal, we charge fair market value. As of the time we put in for this, we were waiting for the appraisal, but it will be based after the appraisal comes in on the current fair, fair market value. And then we increase accordingly through the term of the lease.
Got it. Okay. Renewal of a new lease for an existing tenant, uh, at 6400 Cuthoff Road. What questions do we have? Questions or comments? Hearing none. 681-2023 is approved. Please sign. 682-2023, uh, by councilmembers McCormick and Griffin, an emergency ordinance authorizing the director of port control to enter into one or more master leases in agreements with various signatory airlines and cargo carriers for the use of the occupancy of certain city-owned spaces located at Cleveland-Hopkins International Airport for a period not to exceed, uh, 12 years. Director? Assistant Director?
Uh, so this is our master lease that we hold with all of our signatory airlines. In, in my opinion, this is our biggest lease.
Yep.
This is all the signatory airlines. Um, once you sign the master lease, you are in the master lease till the end of the master lease. So this is, you know, this, we're looking to, um, ex, we are not yet completing, we have not yet completed our negotiations with the airlines. So we are going through that process now, hoping to finalize it by the end of this month. This ordinance is being passed with, with the hope that we do end negotiations for the new master lease because this new master lease will incorporate the structure of the debt for the new master plan, which makes this, um, you know, a, a very important master lease. In lieu of that happening, we do have another term left on our current master lease, but this would replace the current master lease and incorporate the funding necessary for our master plan.
You, you beat me to it because I was going to ask you, how does this play into the master plan and why is this so important in order to advance the work of the renovations and master plan of the airport?
Exactly. So our current master lease was structured as a five with two two-year options. We are right now at the seventh year, which did not include a master plan debt. This we put together, uh, we've been working with the airlines on this all year, knowing that we are trying to implement the master plan that I'm sure council is very much aware of, which is phase one, uh, of our new airport development program, which would create a brand-new terminal. Um, so this would have this, the debt that we need structured into it so when the airlines approve this master lease individually, because we enter however many signatory carriers you have, they all get the same master lease other than their space is different. Um, and they would all be not only approving the master lease, they would be approving that debt that goes with the master plan.
Got it. Thank you. And, um, okay. So this legislation authorizes you to go into those leases. What is a rough timeline that you expect? I know you can't say specifically, but expect to be in lease with these airlines?
The term?
No, no, no. When do you expect to have these, these, that the airline signed on?
Well, we would be requ-
Hope, yeah.
Well, hope, we don't, well, you know the phrase about hope. Um, we would, we would absolutely have to have it complete, reviewed by each individual airline and approved with a start date of 1/1/24 because you cannot start a master lease on, on an off date. It has to be at the beginning of the year because of the way the financial deal works. So we would, we're hoping to have it complete by, no later than August so they can take it back to their legal teams for intensive review.
So this legislation is critical to keep you on time to get these leases underway for the 12-year period?
Correct. Well, it's an up to 12-year. We're still negotiating that with the airlines, um, but we are proposing no, we're asking for 12. That's a negotiated item.
So what I would ask at, uh, the August meeting or whenever appropriate, if you could provide us updates on those conversations and kind of where we're at and what that looks like?
Absolutely.
I've got, uh, legislation authorizing the airport to enter into master leases with our air carriers, um, as a part of, uh, the structure to launch the master plan at the airport. What questions do I have on 682-2023? Councilwoman Polisic?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my honorable colleagues, to the, um, representatives of the port control. Do the airlines have to sign off on the capital projects?
So, so if they're in the master lease-
Right.
The master plan aside, if we issue debt, any debt, meaning we issue bonds-
Right.
We can never do so at any time, not today, not tomorrow, without the specific approval of the, of the signatory airlines. So yes, we, we absolutely need that approval and it's in our master lease.
So they then understand what their, um, future costs will be?
To a degree-
Mr. Chairman.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, to, uh, to a degree. Um, we don't issue debt frequently. Um, I've been CFO since 2010. We did a small debt issuance in 2018 as well as repurposing some old bonds. Even if I repurpose old bonds, I need airline approval because they take on all the financial risks at CLE. So, um, I've never seen a case where the airlines didn't support it, but we don't typically ask for a debt issuance unless it's something that's typically absolutely going to benefit the airlines themselves.
Because what, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues, because whatever action we take affects their landing fees, correct?
Absolutely. Everything that we do at CLE, all of our costs, even our operating costs.
Right.
So our operating costs are what set, uh, what I call the rates and charges, and that is their landing fee as well as their space rental fee. So the goal at CLE is to generate as much non-airline revenue-
Yeah.
-as we possibly can to offset that cost.
Yeah. Because obviously we all know we're in a very competitive market and we want to make sure our costs for the consumer, uh, who fly out of Hopkins are as low as they can possibly be so we can be competitive. Because I still know friends, have friends that drive down to Akron, Canton, believe it or not. I don't understand why, but they do. And, or I've had people who've driven to Pittsburgh. Um, so I don't understand that one either because you think about it, the mileage and everything, inconvenience to me, I, I don't see what, what they're saving, but nonetheless, I want to make sure we are competitive. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And if, uh, the, another critical component of, we always talk about the non-aeronautical revenues into the system in order to lower those fees as well. So go ahead.
And through the chair to the council, that, that's a great question. I, I do want to say, we do, when, when we do something of this magnitude that incorporates a large amount of debt, the finance team does do a lot of projecting by each airline to show them how their costs would be effective. We don't, we, we are taking what we are asking for and weaving it in.
Okay.
And, and our landing fee, by the way, is the lowest it's ever been.
Okay.
Uh, that we, as far as we've done research going backwards, but we do not dictate what the airlines themselves charge. So we, we know their costs, that's what we charge them, but as you know, we have a very diversified group of airlines and they're charging very different rates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councilman. Additional questions on 682-2023? Hearing none. 682-2023 stands approved. Please sign. Ordinance number 711-2023 by councilmembers McCormick and Griffin, by departmental request, emergency ordinance authorizing the director of port control to enter into one or more contracts with AEM Commercial, Inc. to provide an earth networks, spherical siren system? How about that? And related equipment, services and software at Cleveland-Hopkins International Airport for the division of airports, Department of Port Control, for a period of one year with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Department of Port Control. 711.
Uh, to the council, uh, this is basically a lightning detection system. Some of the airlines out there right now have the same system. We are looking to get the audio version of this system so that if anybody's on the airfield and it's detected, they would give a warning to anybody for safety reasons. And we are just trying to all have one system that's all incorporated, both with the airlines and with the airport for the safety of those on the airfield.
Thank you so much. And the discrepancy between cost on years one, two, three, and four, is that installation or can you speak to that?
Yes. The first year is the actual equipment being installed and after that is basically the maintenance of the software itself.
Got it. So this is lightning detection software, including audio for Hopkins and, uh, Berkhurst Hopkins.
This would just be at Hopkins.
All right. Do I have any questions on lightning detection software at Berkeley or at Hopkins? Here. No one's blocking. That'll be your next job, councilman. Order of 711-2023 is approved. Thank you. Please sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's roll to, uh, do I have anyone from CD here? CD, Community Development? Nope. What about?
She's, uh, she's on.
And there are pieces? Oop. I've got. Got it, got it. Okay. Um, thank you. 553 with councilmember Moore to talk about the home repair grant. And, uh, councilman Bishop, we'll start with yours, sir. So, uh, ordinance number 556-2023 by councilmember Bishop, emergency ordinance authorizing the director of community development to enter into a grant agreement with Union Miles Development Corporation or its designee to partially finance the construction of homes for veterans experiencing homelessness. Councilman, you want to kick us off here?
Uh, yes. Thank you, um, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we, uh, uh, we in partnership with, uh, Union Miles and Riddall in, uh, in the vision of Damon Forson when he first, uh, when, when I first come on council, we kind of envisioned, uh, um, a development where we can house homeless veterans. Um, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, we all know that a lot of times when our veterans go off to serve in the, in the armed forces and they go overseas, a lot, a lot of times they don't come back the same person they left. Uh, and they experience a migrant, um, a, 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 a litany of things that's, that's, that sends them into homelessness, including mental health. Uh, so we have got together and formed a partnership and we've been working on this for quite a few years, that we will have a development where we can house not only homeless veterans, but we can use it as a center for, in the, in the community where we can have a learning center, a community center, a holistic approach to just, to, 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 to help veterans learn as well as the community can come in and kind of, um, mingle with the veterans and learn from the veterans. Uh, we have, um, uh, we're asking for, uh, upper money, um, and, uh, I want to thank the administration for working on this project. I want to thank councilman, President Blaine Griffin. And, um, Mr. Chairman, I ask my colleagues to support this, uh, very important, um, measure in Ward Two. Uh, this is going to be a Cadillac, uh, development here in our community. We hope to spur a lot more development around this commu, around this, um, center, the center for the veterans. Uh, we are going to name it after the Walter Collins veteran who's, who's appeared at council. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I just ask my colleagues to support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. And I don't know a better use than veterans experiencing homelessness. So congratulations on this critical piece in your neighborhood, uh, a really, uh, important, uh, housing tool for, for those that served our country. Um, do I have additional comments or questions on 556-2023 by councilmember Bishop? Councilman Conwell?
Yeah, um, I have to step out for emergency, my chair, because I mean, this is going to be, to the chair, to the councilmember, um, what street, what area, and what is the total cost? And I'm sorry I stepped out because it's very important to me.
Councilman?
Mr. Chairman, this is going to be on Harvard Avenue between, uh, 100th Street and about 106th Street. Um, the total cost of this endeavor is, is, we're still trying to nail down the total cost, but it's going to be around $1.6 million. Uh, this is just the first phase, uh, of this development and we are, we are going to be kicking in some additional funding and we're going after additional funding to complete the, the community center that we're going to have, uh, at the same site of, of the veterans' home.
Is it an open space site or is it, um, how, how big is it?
Uh, this, this site is, um, uh, through the chair, this site is open right now. It is shovel-ready. Uh, we've cleared this, um, piece of land several years ago. Um, this land is owned presently by the Development Corporation just because we've been working on this project for probably about, since I've become on council. So we've been working on this project for quite a few years. Uh, the land is already in Union Miles' possession and we are ready to go. We really, uh, we are ready to break ground later, uh, in the summer, preferably. Uh, we're trying to break ground before the fall sets in.
And you, you requested for how much? What's 556, do you request it?
Uh, 750,000.
I mean, I'm there. And you plan to build around it or anything like that? You have the housing or something to upgrade in that area?
Um, through the chair to the councilman, yes, we are, we are looking at, uh, other sites to develop on, uh, and we hope that this spurs, uh, private developers come in and want to develop around this site. Um, we are also looking at, um, a, a business in the area to kind of develop, they're looking to develop some more, um, more of their company around this business because we, it's in a, it's, it's near a, uh, industrial type of setting. Um, so we are looking for expansion of those businesses to create jobs and actually, um, solicit the jobs for our veterans also.
Yeah, I'm going to do whatever I can to, um, I mean, I support it 100%. I was listening to my younger, uh, council member stop, but by riding and driving that area, you inherited. So, I mean, I saw it and I'm there 100%. If you can get more than a million and six, damn there. You can stipulate to build around it. That would be cool beans for that area and then you could bring in more economic development to that area. This would be, uh, a good shot in the arm for, uh, for that street.
Uh, through the chair, uh, you are exactly right, council, councilmember Conwell. We, uh, we hope this invigorates the community. Uh, we hope this spurs more development in the community. Uh, we hope this lifts the spirit of the community, uh, as well as the veteran community as a whole.
Yeah, it's a good piece. I support it 100%. Anything else I could do, uh, I mean, I'm there. I'm there to help.
All right. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you, councilman. Then I have had over here.
Charles.
Oh, you're good? Okay. Councilman Joe Jones?
I guess we'll share it back and forth maybe. I want to just commend my colleague and, and the administration for working to make sure, um, that this grant is available. And I think looking at the overall economic situation in the southeast side of the city of Cleveland, especially in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood, we have not received any kind of fundamental development, uh, since they built a school over there and, um, put a new concrete road over 20-some years ago. So it, it is about time and I agree with my colleague, this along with other opportunities, hopefully, uh, making themselves available, uh, for, um, the east side of the city of Cleveland would help us rebuild a fragile neighborhood, uh, that for, uh, in recent memory, the last 30 years, uh, our financial institutions have not been, uh, in fact, they've been missing in action in terms of investment. Uh, we've had hearings on that here at this table, uh, and I just want to commend my colleague, Kevin Bishop, uh, for being able to get this project. Uh, his neighborhood becomes strong. He borders against Ward One as well as Ward Four. Um, those neighborhoods as well will benefit indirectly from the investments, uh, that are made in one and made in another. We all benefit in that proposition. So again, congratulations to Kevin Bishop and also to his local development corporation that has been working on this, uh, this proposition for a little bit of time. So with that being said, um, congratulations, brother.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Kevin?
Uh, yeah.
Can I say a quick point?
Yes.
I want to echo with, um, councilmember Joe Jones, who are narrating here at the table. I think council really should visit the southeast side. It's my heart of hearts. 10, 15 million, won't do it. I mean, this, everything he's been narrating over there, um, he's telling the truth. This, it need a lot of help. The streets are unsafe streets. It's like, it's a forgotten area. And I visit all you guys, Ward. You know, I've been in your boards, man. And yeah, 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 you're right. I've been over there. But when I see things, I look through the eyes of a senior statesman, uh, as a councilman. things, I look through the eyes of a senior statesman, uh, as a councilman. And I was sitting in that Mount Pleasant area on a Saturday. I went home. I went to sleep. I was so depressed. And I just heard Joe Jones echoing in my ear about certain things. And I said, God, this dude is telling, he under telling what's going on over there. Streets need to be done. Um, houses need to be raised and torn up. Open vacant vandalized houses. High grass, high weeds. It's like someone just abandoned. They need more than, uh, than $10 million or $15 million that the mayor is talking about. They need a lot. And that's why you see the crime. And you know I'm telling it, Joe?
We need 220 million.
You see the crime, um, that's happening in that area. Council need to take a visit over there. And, and I commend you for your project. That's why I was asking you questions about it. We need to take a visit, and you see that area. And some areas on the west side look bad also. And I got a chance to have an up close view. Because I look from the eyes as a councilman, and, and I see, and I hear you guys talk at the table. But when I ride the neighborhood, I'm able to see and understand, um, what's going on in those neighborhoods more than what I'm voting for. And that southeast side of Mount Pleasant, woo, man, it needs a lot.
Well, Councilman, we used, before the pandemic, we used to do the, uh, ride-alongs where everybody went into each other's ward. We should bring that back. That's a really good suggestion. I'll talk to the council president about that. I thought that was very valuable when we used to do those. So, very good point. Alrighty, with no other comments, again, Councilman Bishop, congratulations. 556-2023 stands approved. Please sign. Alrighty, 553-2023 by Councilmember Moore. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Community Development to enter into an agreement with Slavic Village Development for the Home Repair Grant Program through the use of Ward 12 Casino Revenue Funds. Just chatting with Councilwoman Moore. This is her rep casino funds. She's fully in support of this. Wants the money out.
So moved.
So moved. Any questions, 553?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing none. 553-2023 is approved. Please sign. Alrighty, Public Works, blown up. Alrighty, ordinance number 683-2023. Do we have the director joining us today?
No, I'll be here for the director.
Okay. Ordinance 683-2023 by Councilmember Bishop and Griffin by departmental request.
It's no finance.
It's just DPS, yeah. Sorry, just DPS on that piece. My apologies.
Careful, we wake us up.
Just DPS on that piece.
It's DPS.
By Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more standard requirement contracts for the purchase lease or lease, lease or, oh, lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles. Apparatus and offer equipment, cabs, bodies, accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles authorized for their intended purposes, including vehicle rehabilitation, training, and inspections as needed for the Department of Public Utilities. I think the Law Department tried to see how many times you could put authorized and equipment in one piece of the legislation.
They did a good job.
Director, 683-2023, please.
Council, uh, Chair to the council, this is our annual piece. Uh, we have two pieces of, uh, but this is our piece for enterprise fund, to be able to purchase, um, things as various as police vehicles, fire vehicles, tractors, cutters, you name it, waste collection trucks. I have here with me Commissioner Jeff Brown to be able to answer any questions you may have about this piece of legislation.
So I've got 683 on your tablet. You'll have a list of the equipment that is requested to purchase with these dollars. And this is enterprise, so CPP, water, WPC. Um, I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Bishop first. Councilman Bishop?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. We, uh, let's, um, Mr. Chairman, like, like, uh, like the director said, this is the annual, um, um, it's an annual piece of legislation. They come back to purchase vehicles. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm fully in support of this. But I, I just want to note that, um, that going forward in the future, when we have, um, pieces of legislation with such large amounts, uh, whether it be enterprise fund or whether it be from general fund, the pleas to, um, if we can, uh, get this pieces, uh, legislation heard, uh, while we are in session and not on the summer session, I would appreciate that. Okay? All right. But, Mr. Chairman, this is a, these are important vehicles that we must have for, um, the operation of our departments. I fully support this.
Thank you, Councilman. And Assistant Director, I got you. Um, why, why is this coming in the summer and not in regular session?
Uh, so the timing of the bonds, uh, to the chair, to the, to by-
It's the what?
Timing of the bonds.
Timing of the bonds.
Timing of the bonds.
Well, I think you've heard, the administration's heard loud and clear that, from the other pieces too, that it's the desire not to hear these off one-off.
Absolutely. We'll make, we'll make a point to the chairman.
Can you explain, um, how do we come up with these vehicles? Is there an entire fleet analysis? Is there a wear and tear analysis? How, how was this list developed?
Uh, to the chairman, uh, every year, when this list is developed through a, a rating system of the, the vehicle fleet. So it's based on mileage, age, year, condition, uh, and overall usage. And then it's developed from those parameters. And, uh, all categories of vehicles are on a, a certain replacement cycle, lifecycle replacement, and these are the ones that are at that point now.
Okay. So if you no longer need five pickups, you'll only need three, you take that into consideration when you, so we take into consideration not only the condition, but hey, do we still need that vehicle? Is that correct?
We're, we're always rightsizing the fleet, correct?
Okay, okay. Um, alrighty, and then this, okay. And you believe that this, uh, legislation provides water, WPC, and CPP what they need to properly operate in our neighborhoods?
I do.
What questions do I have on 683-2023?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman?
I thought you had put me down.
Joe Jones, my apologies. Councilman Joe Jones.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, to, you know, and I, I concur, Mr. Chairman, uh, with, um, the chairperson, the chairman of municipal properties, um, as relates to being able to delve into this a little bit more and kind of understand the needs. I presume that all of this is, uh, out of bond initiative that was stated. And the reason why it wasn't put in, for clarification, Mr. Chairman, so I can understand this, if the, if the director could elaborate, uh, was due to bond timing. Can you elaborate, explain that? How does that work? Why, why we would be here now versus-
Through finance, they, they, when, when they say let the bonds, they, they sell the bonds, and the monies have to be put in place. Once the monies are in place, then we can move forward with this. You can't process any legislation like this without the funding already being in place. We need to know where the money's coming from.
Also, if I could add to that, through the chair to the councilman, we, we could have waited until full sessions were in place, but we do have the issues with timing as far as getting into the market. The quicker we can get into the market, the better off we are. So in a case like this, we will, uh, do our best to get here before, so we're not jamming this into the summer session. But these are the kind of things that we had in mind. We thought about trying to get this legislation as quickly as we could.
Okay, so make sure I'm clear here with first the distinguished gentleman in terms of the timing, because I, I'm still, it's still fuzzy here. So you're saying to me that, um, on the bonding as relates to, to timing, you needed to have a budget to be a part of the bonding request? I mean, explain that.
There was a budget of, there, this was the budgeted amount that we wanted to spend. Then, then the Finance Department let the bonds that would finance this, that would provide the funding for it.
Okay.
So one can't happen without the other.
Oh, I see. So now, in this particular instance, it's just a matter of, you knew you needed this, then you told the, the, um, um, the Finance Department, we need to have this. Can you put this out in the bonding proposition?
Pretty much, yes.
Right. And so then, you had already submitted this, I presume? Or did you need to actually have the legislation in order to get the bonding?
The legislation could not be submitted until the bonds were available. To the, to the funding, I can't, I can't do the legislation until the funding is in place.
Okay, so then, in a, in a situation like what we're talking about right now, it wouldn't technically speaking be an issue, uh, because you've already got the money available. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman, to the distinguished gentleman? Is the money, was the money already made available?
The, the, the money was not made available until after this list was created.
Right. But you don't need legislation, is what I was hearing.
I need legislation to give me the authority to purchase the items on this list.
Right. But you already had the money available, because you've already presented what you needed.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So then, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, and a better understanding, is that the money was already available. It's just the fact that you, you're now making, you're bringing this to the council to purchase, correct?
This, this, this was created and brought to the council as soon as the funding was available. There was no delay.
When was the funding made available, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'd have to, had to get back to you on that. Finance would have to tell us exactly when it was made available.
I'm hearing directly clear. I, I know I, you know, I, I know what you're saying, right? I'm just trying to pull it out of you, because at least you put it out there. So if you put it out there, I'm going to ask questions so I can understand it. So the, the chairman is saying, and we want to make sure that we're clear, because we want to be accommodating to the administration. But we also want to make sure that we're vetting these pieces out properly. Because the issue that we've had sitting here at this table, at least since I've been here, so that you can understand what my situation is as an elected official representing Ward One, is you will bring out a listing of these things, um, uh, vehicles and equipment, and, and this is not a small ask. And then we'll come back, and we don't have enough garbage collection vehicles. We, we have a problem with removing snow in our communities. We're sold to bill the goods that we have when we sit here and we pass these budgets off, that we have the equipment necessary to do the work. And then when we get out into the territory, we find out we don't have the equipment to do the work. I.e., for an example, uh, we've been having a struggle for the last seven and a half years with vacant lots. And each year, we've had a director, a previous director, with a whole bunch of excuses. And so when I sit here at this table, I don't want to waste one moment, one second of my time. I want to resolve those issues and not have the same issue every single year. We should be having improvements, uh, in this city as relates to public service. And the public service RAM, we have to serve our public. And as a elected official, I'll be the first to tell you, I make no excuses for government not being able to provide the kind of services that our citizens deserve to have. So when we're having these vehicle discussions here, and you say you're going to hurry up and push this in front of us, and you tell us the reason why you're doing it is because it's a bonding issue, and then I start digging deeper and it's not really the case, um, then it, 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 it makes me question you as the person who's bringing it here. So your credibility comes into question when I'm asking certain questions and can't get the answer to it. And so, not speaking for the chairman, but as one of his members on his committee, if he's requesting that this, he was nice to let this go in this session. Because if I was the chairman, I would have held it. And you would have to come back on the normal session to deal with an issue like this, because this is not a small amount of money here. And you're not telling me why this would be a rushed emergency issue to be passed in this legislative executive piece. I haven't heard anything yet, other than the fact that, you know, it's a bonding issue, but the money is already there.
So, I'd like to speak on that. So what I did not clarify is, one of the major issues why this is in front of you now and not waiting till two months from now or three months from now, there is a, a universally, there is a backlog on any type of equipment. Right now, I am waiting almost 700 days to receive a fire truck. I, I'm waiting six to nine months to receive a police car. The, and, and as we get into model year changes, that draws out even farther. So if this was to wait, those three months that this would wait would extend the, the purchase, uh, delivery time of that, maybe up to six to seven, eight months. So that's kind of where the priority is. Right, right now, there's the backlog on anything that is, is it being manufactured is horrendous.
Right. So, and, and I've heard this argument too, right? So we know we have an issue, right? So my humble suggestion, Mr. Chairman, would be, how do we resolve this, this issue? And, and it's really easy, because you said you already know what you need to have in advance. And you already have an assessment team that's already out there. So making it available to the chairman and the committee, here's the outstanding equipment. We're going to be coming into the future to talk about this, or maybe having a pre-session ahead of time, uh, to talk about those vehicles that need to be replaced, so the council can be in a partnership with you. We fundamentally thoroughly understand the needs, and we want to make sure that we're accommodating to the administration. And we, of all people, want to make sure that the services reach our people. And so we want to be your partner. But at the last moment, finding out this at the table is difficult for us to do our due diligence and to really fundamentally grasp it and understand why these vehicles need to be purchased and what that is, is, and then why those departments are not here sitting at the table to talk about this. So just, out of just what I would say, professionalism, professional courtesy, um, to let us know in advance, and I'll be your partner. In fact, I'll do better. I'll be your huckleberry. I'll be the one out there screaming about how we need to get certain things in here. But when I'm sitting at this table and, and we're getting bombarded with stuff at the last minute on a summer session, when these things are supposed to, by law, by qualified ordinance, make their way through the process of committee assignments, then we should be trying to do the best we can to adhere to that. Because that is the reason why we sit here, 17 members of Cleveland City Council, and that is to vet out the processes and what's happening in the city of Cleveland. And then have the opportunity to talk about, you got a chipper here. Why aren't we getting certain things done in our respective territories to certain services from these various different municipal operations? So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, uh, my humble suggestion is, if we know ahead of time, that helps me to help you, to help us, help our communities.
So Councilman, and, and this would be through Councilman Bishop with his leadership, but we could ask for a more strategic projection of the vehicle needs within the city, and potentially have a hearing through MSP on that issue to kind of, under, before the legislation comes, understanding where we at, what percentage of fleet maintenance, what percentages are, you know, so that, I think that's a really great suggestion on a hearing that we could hold, um, kind of give an overall, you know, understanding of what our vehicle maintenance needs are. Thank you, Councilman. Really good-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the administration. I don't want you to think that, um, I'm overbearing, but just as an elected official, I'm concerned about making sure I do my job the best I can.
Noted.
Do I have additional questions on 680? Councilman Plensik?
So, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues to the administration, these vehicles are all for the Department of Public Utilities, correct?
Are listed on this legislation, correct?
Yep, yep. So there are, there is no other acquisitions of any other vehicles in any other department or division?
It's another, that's the next piece of legislation.
Okay, I know that's coming. So, but on this one, it's just utilities. And the vehicles that are on here were submitted by the divisions to you, correct?
Correct.
So these are vehicles that they, they insist they need at this point.
These divisions have deemed these the highest priority vehicles that they need at this time.
Now, are these purchases or lease?
All of these are purchases.
Direct purchases.
Direct purchase.
And, um, and how long you expect to get the, take to get these?
Each category is going to be different. Cargo vans are probably six to eight months. Uh, any medium or heavy-duty truck is probably going to be closer to, uh, seven, eight, maybe nine months, depending on the, the, uh, the complexity of the outfit. So a dump truck is going to take longer than a, like a utility truck.
Yeah, okay. No, Mr. Chairman, I, um, I, I would only say to all my colleagues, um, the rolling fleet is critical to our operations. And so it's something that I'm hoping the administration continues to deep dive on, that we have vehicles, because I'm concerned about the, uh, vehicles in other departments and divisions. Um, and I'm, I'm glad to see that, uh, Public Utilities is, um, is putting forth. I would like to see more vehicles for, uh, Cleveland Public Power, uh, but that's for another day and another time. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any additional questions or comments on 683-2023? Back to Councilman Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to belabor this, um, and that's the reason why it's so important to vet these pieces out. Um, the legislation is for the purchase of lease or lease-to-purchase by one more requirement, standard contracts, and various types of of on-road vehicles. Uh, do we have a breakdown on what we're actually leasing here?
Is everything purchased?
At, at current, everything is being purchased. Uh, we, we put that language in there. If, if there is a specific situation, that would, leasing would be a better alternative.
So Commissioner, is that, we need immediate garbage trucks, therefore we have to have a short-term lease?
Correct.
Which we experienced a few years ago.
Correct.
Councilman?
No, no. So basically, what we have here in front of us is being purchased?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Alrighty, 683-2023 is approved. Please sign. Here you go, Councilman Plensik. Here's your next one. 684-2023 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts for the purchase lease or lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles, apparatus, and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles authorized for their intended purposes included vehicle rehabilitation, training, and inspections as needed for the various divisions of city government. Uh, this is 684, and on your tablet, you will also find the list of requested purchases, uh, for public works, waste collection, motor vehicle maintenance, parking facilities, uh, ba-ba-ba-bum, streets, recreation, property management, park maintenance, traffic engineering. So, uh, Director, kick us off.
Yeah, you should also see, there should be safety in there as well.
Safety.
Yep. Uh, so to, uh, through the chair, to the council, uh, again, do want to apologize for the lateness of this piece. We will strive to get this piece to you sooner. Uh, this covers the general fund, um, equipment. And again, Commissioner Brown's here to ask for any questions about the purchases and what actually is on this list.
Thank you. The, um, police SUVs, are those Explorers?
Yes.
Okay. I was told, uh, a long time ago by the police to stop buying Dodges, so it's just what they told me. So glad to see those are Explorers.
As of 20, the end of 2023, the Dodge charge is no longer being manufactured.
Okay. I mean, no hate- Okay, I mean, no hate to Dodge, I'm just telling you what they told me, so. So you'll have that list to review on 684 on your tablets. Councilman Bishop, this is routed through Municipal Services and Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, we realize this is an annual occurrence, we need to purchase vehicles every year, and I fully support this. I got a couple of questions here. On cutter attachments for park maintenance, it said miscellaneous, says $200,000. And for asphalt equipment, miscellaneous for streets, it says $200,000. What are those? Explain that. What are those fees, and are those accurate numbers?
Through the chairman, to the councilmen, the $200,000, and the reason it's put in miscellaneous, there's, there's a number of different style cutters that we bought or are buying under those. So we, different widths, different types of cutters. So rather than list those all out to make this list even, even longer, we just put it into a miscellaneous category and order them as a batch.
So how many cutters are we getting for $200,000?
For $200,000, that's going to be probably 20 to 30 cutters, depending on the mix.
20 to 30?
Yes.
So we don't have the accurate number?
Well, it's, they, they're different prices. Some of the cutters are $6,000, some of the cutters are $8,000. If we go with a, you know, a big bat wing cutter, that might be $22,000.
So have you, through the chair, have you determined how many cutters you need? I know you don't know the price of each individual cutters, and there'll be different prices, but have you determined, I need 22 cutters or 24 cutters? And they could be any range from $6,000 to $10,000 each?
Correct.
So you, you've determined how many cutters you need?
Yes, yes.
It should be understood, though, through the chair, to the councilman, that we have a schedule, so the cutters that we need, we won't be able to get it all in this batch. So we'll come back again and do another batch to get more. So right now, what we have is a threshold at $200,000.
$200,000?
For the cutters.
So, so since you have that threshold batch at $200,000, why is it the same threshold for the streets department in asphalt equipment?
So with the, with the asphalt equipment, that is a combination of asphalt machines, grate, not graters, rollers, the whole nine yards. So in fairness, when I put this list together, I put that into a miscellaneous category because they, we were still in the process of really defining what the resurfacing program was going to be and what equipment would be required to fulfill that need.
So if you're, you're basically saying you want to leave it open to, to be at your discretion?
Not to my discretion, but because it's always a moving target, the priority for a certain type of machine may change between now and the time we actually order it. So it gives us just a little bit of latitude to make sure that we get what we need when we need it.
Okay, so through the chair, how many, how many tractors are we ordering here? For, and this is specifically for park maintenance to cut vacant lots, how many tractors?
Large tractors we are ordering four. Walk-behinds, there is a total of five. And just so that we're clear, this, under park maintenance, this includes park maintenance, cemeteries, vacant lots, and a greenhouse.
Okay, so you are purchasing the same amount of, as far as dollar amount, you are purchasing the same amount of tractors as you are asphalt equipment? The miscellaneous asphalt equipment?
This, this same dollar amount, correct.
Same dollar amount, because I, and I'm sure that from the calls that you have gotten from council, that we have far more complaints for grass and vacant lots that need to be cut than paving or streets. So I'm trying to figure out, why are we investing the same amount of money into asphalt? And I think everybody's, and I'm not sure, but I've never received complaints about the asphalt crews not paving or not being able to pave the number of streets that we have to be paved. But I know for a fact that we are always talking about grass that need to be cut and lots that need to be cut. Now why aren't we investing more in cutting of grass than we are in asphalt, just as a general, as I'm looking at this piece of legislation? Why aren't we investing more in tractors and walk-behinds to try to keep up with the demand that we have for grass? Because grass is always going to grow.
Absolutely. So through the chair, to the councilmen, as far as, we do have a schedule for the, we, I think we purchased last year about 10 tractors.
10 that last year and 20 the year before.
And 20 the year before that. So we're trying to keep, we don't want to purchase too many tractors at one time, so we can keep a good level of, you know, to keep them refreshed. So if we were to purchase too many tractors now, say we purchased 20 tractors now, when it comes time to refresh, all those tractors are going to go at the same time. So we try to keep a good amount of time going through. Also, with this, we're trying to also, as we're expanding our, our street project, our street programs, our resurfacing programs, we are actually trying to, trying to get a good balance of how we spread out the equipment throughout the department. It's a large department, we've got to find a way to spread that money out throughout a bunch of divisions, and that's kind of where we are, we made that decision to try to strike side as best we can. But again, this is a schedule, and so we plan to come back and do this every year. And if we need to pivot, we will do that if we need to.
So through the chair, so you are expanding the asphalt paving capacity of the city, but we're just keeping the grass cutting in pretty much on par, is that what you're saying?
No, that, through the chair, to the councilperson, is about the amount of equipment that we can do with the amount of money that we have available to us. So again, we, we are not limiting that, and so again, if we need to pivot, as we're going through this, we will pivot. But the idea is that we believe that at this time, this looks like what we can do with the amount of resources we have and the best we can do right now.
Through the chair, to the director, you know, it's, you know, with the demand that we have for, for cutting grass, and I'm going to just say this, with the demand that we have for cutting grass, we need to be looking at, to increase our capacity to vacant lots, because this is not working. This year, we are, this was far worse than last year, it was worse. And we are continuously having more grass to cut as we move through this cycle of this count, this body. And we are saying at this table right now that we need more resources and investment and efforts going into cutting grass. And I don't want to pick on asphalt for, for any particular reason, but I'm just comparing it from asphalt. We need to expand our ability to cut the vacant lots in a timely manner. So I, I'm assuming that that will start with equipment and then actually personnel.
Through, through the chair, to the councilperson, one of the things we found this year is that we need more cutters. So that's why we have the $200,000 with the cutters to try to get more cutters. So we did spend a lot of time, a lot of money on tractors, and when we got out there, a lot of folks said, hey, we need cutters more than we need tractors. Although we need tractors, we need more cutters. So we tried to lean more towards getting more cutters in this budget.
So since you need, through the chair, since you need more cutters, so you having a lot of tractors that sit idle because they don't have cutters, is that what you're saying?
We can use them for other things. So if we, if we, for instance, if we're talking vacant properties, the cutters that we use in vacant properties are very different from the cutters that we use in parks. So that would be the case, and again, that's, again, these are the things that we're finding out as we're getting out there, and we're trying to pivot now with this budget.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Ploncik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues to the administration. I want to fall behind the Chairman Bishop line of questioning. It has been a very rough year. In fact, I just sent an email, because we were notified all of this.
I did see that.
A little while ago about Commissioner Scott leaving park maintenance and going over to community development, I believe.
Great job.
But from talking to people in the division, they have repeatedly said, and based on Councilman Bishop's comments, they repeatedly said they don't have enough equipment. They don't have enough equipment, they don't have enough manpower. So what I'm trying to ascertain here is the list that you have here for park maintenance, is this everything they have asked for?
Through the chairman, to the councilman, this, this is a large number of it. This is not everything.
Oh, I know.
This is a, I would say, at least 75% of what they've asked for.
So what got left off the magical mystery list?
Nothing got left off. I would say that the quantities of some items may have been reduced because of prioritization.
Like what, what would, what would have been reduced? Tell me.
I would say that the, I may have reduced the number of pickup trucks in, in order to buy more cutters and more tractors. But the, in the reasoning behind that, if we need to pivot and get more pickup trucks, it's much easier for me to come back to you and request money to lease pickup trucks for a short period of time. I can't lease tractors and I can't lease cutters. I have to buy them.
And that's, and I believe, I believe that's a sound decision.
Thank you.
I think that's a sound decision, and I'm glad that some folks are thinking over there, okay? So the fact of the matter is, because we need, we need those grass cutters, we need the tractors. Again, pickup trucks, you can go on any dealership lot and you can get pickup trucks out there, okay? New, new car dealers, the pickup trucks are there, but the specialized equipment, tractors and some of these other things, those are things that you're going to have to order and you're going to have to wait for, and, and they might be more costly. So, so, okay, so we'll jump off of park maintenance for a moment, because I know they need the equipment. I know they need equipment, so let me jump down to public safety. What was left off their magical mystery list?
Actually, on public safety, the, they received the majority of the stuff that they've asked for, and we have to remember that I have a large quantity of police, fire, and EMS product that is in the process of being built, that was purchased through some of the ARPA funds last year. That, that, those units have not been received yet, but once they are received, I believe we've received eight or nine of the 15 ambulances that are on order.
EMS?
Yes. And I've got, right now, I'm, I've just deployed 22 police cars, and I have another 40 being built. So that's why you might see that number as a little decrease from what you've seen for over regular years, because we've had this huge backlog of equipment that is still coming in.
Okay, and those SUVs are.
They're all SUVs, they're all Ford utilities.
So we're all, we're going in that line with the fleet, then?
Pardon?
We're going, we're going, we're getting away from the car, going to an SUV.
Well, the only car that was available was a Dodge Charger, but that has since been discontinued as of this year.
Yes.
A car is not even an option as a police vehicle anymore.
Okay, so they'll lobby SUVs, which are better, obviously, in snow, as we have in Cleveland. So looking at the entire list, okay, you indicated that there were some deletions in park maintenance. Has most of the divisions that have requested vehicles under Public Works, of what we see listed here, are most of their needs being met?
They are. There was, there was an intense number of meetings that developed this list between every division, between Director Williams and myself, Director Laird, and all the commissioners to get this list dialed into what our true needs are to do the job that they need to do every day.
Okay. That's what I need to know, because it's all, to me, this is, I think all of our frustration at this table has been service. Service is our number one issue. Service and then public safety are, well, I should refer to that, public safety and service. But that's where the rubber meets the road. That's what I hear from my citizens. And, you know, when I was out yesterday, you know, looking where I'm having a problem with an abandoned house and some characters hiding behind it, and you look at the overgrowth and the bushes and the crap that, you know, if we could get someone in there to cut it down alleviates that problem. So we have to be far more aggressive in dealing with these quality of life issues, city service issues, and if we focus on those things, we're going to, we're going to have a big impact in our neighborhoods. And so vehicles, equipment is critical. I can't, we can't ask people to do things that, if we don't have the equipment. And I got to tell you, because that's public record, well, it's not giving public record, but I said it in an email, on one of these houses, I'm going to tell you the dedication, and I'm going to mention it tonight on the floor, of a police officer who went on his own time, member of CPD, went over with his own chainsaw, his own chainsaw to cut down these bushes and shrubs where these clowns were hiding behind on an abandoned house, on his own time, with his own chainsaw. That's the kind of dedicated people we have working for us. I don't forget them, and I'm not going to let them down, and we need to provide all our departments and divisions with the equipment needed to address the concerns in our neighborhoods. That's where I'm at. I don't care about nothing else around here. It's about service. That's what got me elected 13 times, and, because I, I listen to my folks, and it's about service. And I'm, I'm not worried about bridges to nowhere and glitz and glamour, I'm worried about service. So I'll leave it at that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Councilman Ploncik. I have Councilman Joseph Jones. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we be, earlier, we talked about the significance and importance of making sure that, you know, we bring this through the proper committee process, so that we can fundamentally vet some of these things out, because normally in these summer sessions, we really want to deal with those things that we see as real, serious, major, emergency pieces of legislation, and stuff like this needs to be fundamentally vetted out. It would have been nice, Mr. Chairman, to have the various different department heads here to talk about, so we can ask these questions, because, you know, to my colleagues down there, Kevin, we, we have.
If we could, we got it. Councilman, Councilman, please continue, if we could. Councilman has the floor. Councilman, go ahead.
This is important for the table to listen to, because this is an issue that I've been arguing about here this, this session for the last seven years. And the, the issue at hand is, as what Mike Ploncik stated, it is about how we serve our public, and do we serve our public well? And I've had an opportunity to go down to some of our stations to check on what they actually are doing, because the cry is so loud as relates to park maintenance, and we spend a lot of money in Public Works. I believe our budget is 90 million plus. 90 million each year, year in and year out. $90 million. And we're sitting here right now, talking about two pieces of legislation that comes to about $24 million plus. And then we get nothing after this expenditure money, and we've been sitting here doing this as a matter of routine legislation. But then when I go out into my neighborhood and those citizens are screaming every year about those parks, those vacant lots not being cut, and the vacant lots, when they do cut them, they do a bad job, they leave the grass all over the place. And then when people go out, this is as recent as 30 days ago, we had a Todd Alexander go out into the neighborhood to deal with one of the residents that had called several times about a vacant lot needing to be cut. Now, I thanked Todd Alexander, because he did take his blower out there and blow it. But what he did say is, we don't have the equipment to do the work. We don't have the proper equipment to pick this grass up like we need to do it. We don't have the actual equipment. So when I look at this here, Mr. Chairman, to the distinguished director, commissioner, can you tell me, just for the viewing audience, where you have cutter slash attachments, what that means?
So that, once again, in this proposal, the cutters and attachments, that's going to range anywhere from flail cutters to.
Who?
Flail cutters, those are like the rotary cutters.
Okay. And that's for the tractors?
That's for the tractors.
For vacant property.
They get, they get pulled behind the larger tractors. We, we have 60-inch deck cutters that are on this. And once again, some of these units are different than for what we use in vacant lots as we use on, on just open fields. So, but there's a mix of all those cutters in there.
Do you have weewackers in there?
Councilman, if we could let him finish up his thing, through the chair, if we could. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we have weed whackers in there?
Weed whackers are purchased through Park's budget. We purchase a bulk of weed whackers in string trimmers and backpack blowers and chainsaws every year. That comes directly out of Park's budget, it's already budgeted in there.
And so that's not here in this?
That is not in this.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner, the department that does our vacant lots, what is on this list here that could be highlighted that goes straight to vacant lots?
The, so, on this list, the, the first, from the top down, all the way down to the, the line-
That page three?
Yes. In line item, this is trailers, from light trucks to trailers. That is all-
I'm looking for that now. I see park maintenance. So is that the park maintenance?
Through the chair to the-
Park maintenance, yes.
Where it says light truck pickup?
Okay, yes.
And you work all, your way all the way down to where it says trailer. That would be for vacant property.
That is all going into park ma, park ma, or vacant lots. Then when we start with truck, aerial bucket, that's urban forestry. And then when we get down to that, that light, that next light truck line-
Where it says light truck man? See, I'm stopping at the park maintenance where it says light truck A pickup. So from the top, where it says light truck-
If we could, could we make sure that all conversations go through the chair?
A pickup, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner. So, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner, on page three, where it says light truck pickup, all the way down to, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner, light truck A pickup, is that's all that's for vacant lots?
Commissioner, could you go over that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Through the chair to the Councilman, no. Light truck pickup.
At the top, Mr. Chairman to the Commissioner.
To one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine lines down, says trailer?
Yes.
That is all vacant lot.
I see. Mr. Chairman, to the Director, and, and just so I'm on the same page, to the Assistant Director, is this all that vacant lots need to have? Is it, are we filling the entire piece to make sure? And here's what's important, Mr. Chairman, that I hear constantly when I'm on the street, and I get out there when I have a problem, I don't just call you on the phone, I go down there and check on it myself. So my, my question is, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner, do we have all of the supplies and materials and equipment necessary to get these lots cut?
Through the chair to the Councilman, with this budget that you're looking at in front of you, I'm not gonna say this is everything we need, but this is the best we could do with the amount of money that we have available to us, given the amount of divisions that we have to work with. Again, if we need to pivot, we pivot. For example, this year, we had to rent eighteen trucks, or sixteen trucks. We had to rent them, we made a pivot. We, we had to, we had to figure out a way to get these crews, move them around. So it's, it's one thing to be able to cut the grass with the tractors, but then you talk about there's a lot of trim work that needs to be done, so you gotta move these crews around with, with trucks. So we have to, we have to pivot. So it's, it's, I won't say that this is everything we absolutely need, but we're, we're doing the best with the money we have in front of us. If we need to pivot, we'll do that. We absolutely will make those changes.
So I'm, Mr. Chairman, to the Assistant Director, thank you for your honesty. Mr. Chairman, to the Assistant Director, what will work out for us, so that we understand things better, is that continued honesty? And to, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner, to make sure that you educate us on what you did not include in here. And because what, what we don't wanna see here at this table is, we're here on our time and your time in the summertime, and if we are spending our time, and then next year, we get the same result, and then the following year, we get the same result, and so on, et cetera, we're not making any ground. And so I wanna make sure that, when I sit at this table, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner, and to the Assistant Director, that my time is valuable just like yours.
Absolutely.
And when those citizens, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner and to the Assistant Director are calling me, because they need to have their business taken care of, because that lot is an eyesore, because they're about to have an event at their property, and they can't seem to get it done, or they may have had a death in the family, and we can't seem to produce, because we don't have the equipment, it would be good, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner and to the Assistant Director, to know what our weaknesses are, so that we can work in partnership. Because that's what we are, partners, to make sure that we provide, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner and to the Assistant Director, the kind of services that our seniors and our citizens deserve to have in their respective territories. So that's important to me, is to make sure that we're on top of our business. And so whatever, Mr. Chairman, my personal hit here, is whatever the park maintenance need in terms of supplies and materials and vehicles, and whatever it needs to give them all the stuff that they need to have to get this done, so we won't be looking at the same issue year in and year out, because this is year seven for me. And I still get those calls. I didn't get those calls, Mr. Chairman, twenty-seven years ago, and I realize the argument is that we got more vacant lots. But at the end of the day, we need to meet the demand, and we need to offer and provide the service. Why? Because we're spending ninety million dollars a year in public service. And we gotta begin the proposition of getting things done and providing the services for our citizens, so that some parts of our communities, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner, as I wind this down, to the Assistant Director, that they're not deserts and they're not places that look abandoned. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you, gentlemen. We're getting this, because I'm getting it every day. And if I'm getting it, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make sure when you sit there at that table, I'm giving you what the citizens want to see and want to have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. I think I had, is anybody else, Councilman McCormick? I think that was everybody, right? Okay, all right. So seeing no other questions, ordinance number six eighty-four dash twenty-two-three stands approved. Please sign on. We will move to, we will move to ordinance number seven one zero dash twenty-two-three, as amended by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin, by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Works on behalf of the Office of Sustainability to apply for and accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture to conduct a USDA composting and food waste reduction project, to enter into various contracts to implement this ordinance, authorizing the Director to accept gifts from various public and private entities for this purpose. And the amendment is as follows. There is no legal objection to this legislation if amended as follows. In section three, at the end of the first paragraph, strike the period after file and insert including but not limited to food waste collection, compost processing, monitoring, testing, staff training, and other similar or related services. Number two, insert new section five to read as follows. Section five, that the Director of Public Works on behalf of the Office of Sustainability is authorized to enter into one or more contracts with Rust Belt Riders, Composting LLC, Riddall Foundation, Inc., Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District, and other public entities to provide educational material and training sessions for community compost ambassadors, composting workforce development training program needs, engagement with area urban agriculture and community gardeners for the distribution of finished compost and other similar or related services. Number three, renumber existing sections five, six, seven, eight, and nine to new section six, section seven, section eight, section nine, and section ten. This was signed seven eleven twenty-three by Stephanie Melnick. Director, Chief?
Through the chair to the council members, this is a grant in cooperation with the Office of Sustainability. As you all know, we started a project at the West Side Market with Rust Belt Riders to begin composting in the city. This grant is step two, to take composting just from one location, to try to take our show on the road, go citywide. This is a grant to help us begin a pilot project. So this is pretty much a pilot to help us see how we could do composting. So I have with me Arendelle Brumfield, who is going to be able to answer any questions you have about this grant. So I'll turn it over to Ren.
Ren? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like we said, the, the real goals of this program are to increase residential food waste diversion from the landfill, so remove that out of the trash, all this, this food waste, to increase the compost, to increase compost production, and also to establish a community culture of circular economy. These are the basics there.
All right, thank you. This was heard in municipal properties. Councilman Bishop?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we fully support this. This is an initiative that is, will pay dividends down the road, so we fully support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Polynski, you had a question?
Yes, I had a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues. I wholeheartedly support the piece, but this is, this is just what the, the byproduct coming out of the West Side Market?
No, this is actually, through, through the, through the Chairman to the Council, this is actually citywide. So what we'll do is, there will be drop-off locations located throughout the city. Those, we have suggestions for some of those locations, but they're not completely determined yet.
Okay.
There are seven existing right now with the company, so there'll be ten additional, is what we're looking at. And this will be collected from, through, from those locations throughout the city.
So when you say, will this be, I mean, I'm not clear, this will be for businesses, for residential drop-off?
Through the chair, this will be drop-off, and this will be residential. We want the residents, the citizens of the, the city to really participate in that, that process.
Okay, so how, how are you gonna police them?
How are you gonna police them? This is, through the chair, this will be administered through the, in combination with the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District, so we'll have people that we trained as compost ambassadors, similar to what they do with their recycling ambassador program, and what we're just starting to do with our own recycling program, where we have educators that are local subject matter experts who will help educate people in the community. We'll also be partnering with, with Riddall, Riddall Composting, and they will be training even more people in the community on composting, on how this works, so that there's more of an understanding of what we're trying to do.
So, Mr. Chairman, I won't believe your point, but, so we're just not gonna have a bin somewhere where people can come and throw compost, because I, I'm a gardener, that's my hobby. And I got two big compost bins at home. And so I have virtually no garbage, because everything goes in there, paper, shredded paper, I mean, and my garden is excellent because of it. But I know when we put out a quote-unquote dumpster, the next thing we find out is there's tires, there's paint, and there's god knows everything else there. So I just wanna make sure that we're not placing these somewhere, and next thing we know, we got god knows what in there.
So, through the chair to the Council, no, it's not gonna be just a bin, because anytime you put anything out like that, you will get trash in it. So what we'll do is, it'll, it'll, it'll work on the existing model that Rust Belt Riders uses for their drop-offs now.
Okay.
Which I believe the people that are members, they either have a key or combination, so that they can get into it, and there's education that they have before they go.
Okay. That's what I knew. I wholeheartedly support it. I would still, would like to see today, we brought this up at the last four budget hearings, where the city would partner with a big box store, where a resident could go in and get a discount to purchase, just like you do for your electric lawnmowers, get a, get a rebate, where if you purchased a, a recycling bin, a compost bin, that you would get a rebate, and have that in your yard, so we can get that right out of the waste stream, right out of the gate, because then we're gonna save a lot of money in the long run. And people, people who don't realize this, how it benefits your gardens, your flower beds, et cetera, et cetera. This will be a big cost-saving to the city, and I would, again, I'm gonna ask again, when the budget hearings come, I'm gonna ask again for the fifth time, that we look into that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman McCormick?
Thank you. My apologies if you already mentioned this. So we will be partnering with local organizations in Cleveland to develop this, is that correct, through the chair?
Through the chair to the Council, yes.
Okay. And I think about, like, Rust Belt Riders, that does a great job already, are those the folks that you're gonna be talking to, or is it still out there?
Through the chair, yes, Rust Belt Riders, yes. And there will be some in addition. So there'll be Rust Belt Riders, there will be the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District, there will be the Riddall Partnership, so several local organizations that are into, that, that do farm and agricultural education, that already do composting, that do education about waste reduction. So we're trying to make it a very well-rounded, holistic effort.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I've just said this is really awesome. I mean, every time we're talking about recycling, we always say, what about compost, what about compost, what about compost? So really happy to see this come forward, and it's a ton of the waste stream, I would imagine. Would you know, through the chair, what the percentage, you may have already said this, in the waste stream it is?
Through the chair, right now, our, our best estimate is about thirty, thirty-one percent or so of our waste is actually organic waste, which could come out of there. And when you think about that, all this stuff is actually paid for by weight. And food waste and liquid waste, these are very, very heavy. So if we can remove those out and make them into something useful, then, then we're saving money that way, and we're producing something useful on the back end.
That's awesome. And again, thirty percent of our waste stream, if we could go after that to get it out of the waste room, as you noticed, financially and environmentally, a really great program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. And seeing no other questions, ordinance number seven ten dash twenty-two-three, as amended, stands approved. Please sign on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ren. All right. This goes this way. I'm gonna go to ordinance number six thirty dash twenty-two-three, as amended by Councilmember Slife and Mayor Bibb, an emergency ordinance to supplement the codified ordinance, ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen-seventy-six, by enacting new section one seventy-one dot sixty-eight relating to paid parental leave. And we're joined at the table by Mr. Davis and Mr. Abunama from the administration. I don't know who the other gentleman is.
Jason Shakner, Law Department.
Mr. Shakner from the Law Department, and then also Jennifer O'Leary from our attorney and our legal side. And before I move forward, I wanna make sure, are these, are these amendments, or this is what I had? Are these the ones?
Those are the amendments attached to the piece that we've already agreed upon.
So these are the ones? Okay.
And then there's a couple to be made at the table.
Okay, all right. So I'll read the ones that we already had first, and that is, there is no legal objection to this legislation if amended as follows. One, in section one, at section one seventy-one dot sixty-eight A, lines three and four, strike birth or adoption, insert birth, adoption, or appointment of legal guardianship by a court of law. And in line nine, strike or placement of a newly adopted child, and insert the placement of a newly adopted child, or the appointment of legal guardianship of a child by a court of law. Number two, in section one, at new section one seventy-one dot sixty-eight, strike divisions C and D in their entirety, and insert C, an employee who would otherwise be eligible for paid parental leave under division A above, and who experiences a pregnancy loss, as defined by the rules of regulation established pursuant to division I, shall be eligible for three weeks of paid parental leave. And re-letter existing divisions E, F, G, H, I, and J to new divisions D, E, F, G, H, and I. Number three, in section one, at section one seventy-one dot sixty-eight, existing division F, line one, strike D or E above, and insert C or D above. Date seven six twenty-three by Attorney Jason Shakner and Assistant Director of Law. And I'll start out with, if I could, my colleague, who is the co-sponsor and who's been working on this for quite some time. So I'll start off with Mr. Slife, and then if Ms. O'Leary would like to give us the legal definitions, and then I'll pivot to the administration.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Council President. I will keep it brief. In addition to those amendments, there's two others to offer up, but I'll hold them, and I can explain all the amendments in one fell swoop. But essentially, you know, I came to this issue, you know, there's many ways that we're working to make the city of Cleveland work better for our residents, and a lot of that has been looking internally and figuring out what procedurally we need to do to make sure that we are helping our workers be able to help the residents. And, and one place that we've really fallen behind in is, is a lot of our benefits. So we talked about, you know, safe leave a couple months ago, and, you know, a lot of these benefits that haven't been, really haven't been updated since the nineteen-eighties. It's, it's time that we bust out of the nineteen-eighties and into the twenty-twenty's, because failing to do so makes it harder for us to, you know, attract workers that are going to, you know, serve our residents. But also, you know, we, I do think we have a fundamental value in wanting to help the people that- people that serve our community that we see every single day here in this building and other city buildings. So what this legislation would do would essentially be to mirror what you already see in the federal government, in other large cities, in a growing number of private workforces, which is to offer a separate bank of leave available for when parents adopt a child, have a child, are placed with a child through the legal system. And, you know, I believe that this is important for a variety of reasons. And, you know, just some quick numbers, these are what I pulled off online today, just to let people kind of know what the state of, you know, caring for a child today. Average daycare in Cleveland, the Cleveland area is about $284 a week. Average rent in Cleveland is about $1,300. Out-of-pocket childbirth in the Cleveland area is estimated at about $2,000. So there's a lot of costs that come down the pike of having a child in the immediate and ongoing. And what we've found is a lot of people in our workplace have been banking their sick and vacation time, really to the point where you could argue it's not healthy. We have people coming to work when arguably they should be staying home sick, because in order to make sure that they can cover all those costs, if they have a child down the road, they can't use their time that they are allotted now, they have to save it up. And what we've also seen happens is that when it's, you know, if you have a child, you use up all of the time off that you've accrued, and just in the amount of time you're able to reaccrue, you may have another child, and you're in this constant loop where not only are you having to sacrifice financially at a time of, you know, of incoming finances, but you're also, you know, putting yourself in a position where you might not have time off on the other side to take your four-month-old to a doctor's appointment, because that's a normal thing to do. So essentially, what this legislation does is it ensures that our workers will have access to a paid parental leave. It's applicable to the mother, the father, the partner, you know, we're not distinguishing between who's giving birth, who else is in the relationship. I think it's important that we recognize the importance of parenthood for all, because, you know, if you've never heard the first three months of a child's life referred to as the fourth trimester, you know, it can be a pretty trying time, you're up late at night, you're trying to bond with your child, and we want to make sure that our workers are able to do that, and really mirror back to our community the importance of taking time for young children. And we want them to do so in a way that's not setting up their family for, you know, hardship down the road, because they don't have any time left over to continue to care for themselves. So just to, I'll let the administration touch on the cost, but essentially, you know, the cost to harden to operations is negligible. There's not that many children born to city workers, so this is really impactful to the people, but not negatively adversely impacting our ability to deliver out to our residents. Just quickly on the amendments, and then I don't know if it would be preferable to you, Council President, to offer up the remaining two, or allow the others at the table to present. It was, you know, the first amendment that was read, making sure that we acknowledge, and I can speak, you know, a relative of mine, when, you know, came to our family as eventually an adoptee, that was a two-year process, you know, so the time isn't needed necessarily when an adoption goes through, the time is necessary when, you know, you are receiving an infant, you know, and being able to adjust with that. And then the second amendment, one of the things that's in this ordinance is acknowledging that people may also choose to take time after experiencing a pregnancy loss. As it was stated in the original legislation, the language referred to Ohio Revised Code, it was, quite frankly, could be a tough read, just emotionally. So we want to maintain the availability of that time, but thought it was best to not be so prescriptive of what especially women's health care is in municipal law. So those are those two amendments. I can touch on the others now or later, if you'd like, Council President, or I can turn over to the others seated at the table.
Let's do the amendments now, and then if you and Jen can do those amendments now, and then we can open up for deliberation.
Okay, so the amendments, and the two amendments I'm going to offer up have a very specific purpose, because what we're talking about right now is parental leave, you know, this is when you are becoming a parent, but I think we all know that that's not the need that everybody has, and there's many people who have personal medical issues, that are caregiving, that have more longer-term medical needs, and to that end, it distinguished between what this is of paid parental leave, and really the end goal that I think I share with the administration, which is paid family and medical leave. So that's essentially a paid FMLA for employees who are dealing with medical situations that aren't narrowly tailored to childbirth, adoption, you know, what's being introduced. But it's a bigger issue, there's a lot of data to come through, we want to understand how we could implement such a policy in the city of Cleveland, but it requires more analysis and more partnership with other, you know, partners, people affected by it, labor representatives, subject matter experts, different departments. So to that end, the purpose of these two amendments is to create a working group that would be able to move forward from the passage of this legislation, that would work towards that end goal of having a broader paid family and medical leave policy. So the first one is, do I have to offer them individually, or can I offer them as a pair?
Individually in motion. Are we going to?
Individual, usually individual, and then we have a second and any discussion.
Okay, so the first one is, after the fifth whereas clause, insert, whereas, this council will establish a working committee with the administration and stakeholders, including council representatives, the mayor's office, departments of human resources and law, labor representatives, and subject area experts to develop a city-paid family and medical leave policy, is the first.
Councilwoman House is second, so that's been, the first one has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Seeing no discussion on that amendment? That amendment, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
And the second is related, really, to hold that process accountable. So it is, after section two, insert section three, the administration shall report to council regarding the progress of the working committee to develop a city-paid family and medical leave policy by December 1st, 2023, and shall report to council with a written recommendation regarding this policy by May 1, 2024.
Okay, we have, second has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Okay, and hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Administration, do you have any thoughts or anything you would like to proffer, or any conversation you would like to have on this, and then I'll move the questions and answers from my colleagues.
That's fantastic. Through the chair to the council, I'll just reiterate all of Councilman Slife's incredibly cogent points. This is both necessary and record-setting for the state of Ohio. This is an acknowledgement that our employees are people, that people sometimes have kids, and that we need, when life events happens to those, our employees, we're going to keep them here on staff. It's an acknowledgement that parenthood is important, and we want to honor our parents in our midst today. It's an acknowledgement that parenthood is shared by both family members who overseeing that child, both parents. It is also an acknowledgement that too often, women are the ones who are bearing the brunt of that work. And so this is 12 weeks to take care of your kids, and a pivotal part in both their development and yours as a parent. The administration is in full support of supporting our employees as they go through this tremendous life event. And I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight that this is also a smart business decision. There's no way around it. This is how we keep people here, this is how we attract people here. When they're of childbearing age, and they're thinking about what their next employment opportunity is, we want the Cleveland, the city government, to be part of that conversation. It wasn't before, and it will be after this. So I'll add two other notes, just as Councilman Slife stated, there is a benefit for prenatal care, pre-adoption care as well, acknowledging that just when birth happens, that's not the beginning of the efforts here, there's a lot that has to go into that process. And under certain circumstances of pregnancy loss, we want to acknowledge the challenges that those people would face. Ultimately, this policy is just a copy-pasting of a best-in-class policy in Cincinnati, with some additional elements that we derive from Lakewood. I just want to highlight that we're not building the ship here, we're just following best practices, but we really stand by the thoughtfulness and ambition behind it. And just want to acknowledge the council leadership, and especially particularly Councilman Slife's, over the years in trying to get this done. We're happy to join him in seeing it through.
Thank you. Chief? So just to let everybody know and give everybody some background, and I know I have, I know I have Councilmen Slife, I have Councilman McCormick, I got all of you guys, Slife, McCormick, Polensick, Jones, Conwell, anybody else on this side of the table? Councilwoman House, I was going to give you the anchor leg to wrap up, is that fine? Okay, all right. But before I go into questions and answers about this, let me make sure that I make this clear, there's been a lot of stop and starts, a lot of stop and starts. And I know that all politics is about sharing credit, and making sure that everybody gets a piece of the credit, but I do want to come in and say that Councilman Slife has been working on this incessantly, I want to say, from the day one when he got into office. And so this is very, very important, something that him as a parent probably has experienced personally, but it's something that, as he constantly talks about, our parents, when you go out in the neighborhood, are asking, when or how are we going to get that benefit? So I don't want to discount the amount of work that has gone into this. The former Human Resource Director had some challenges during negotiations, so we kind of stopped and started a few different times. And now I want to pivot to something that is paramount and of the utmost importance, because we had an extended conversation between myself and Councilman Slife and Councilwoman Stephanie House. Councilwoman House actually has some very good points as well, and I commend her because she has looked at a different angle to accomplish some of the things that she feels is very important in this, and that is that everybody should have some skin in the game, that at the end of the day, sometimes it's good to attract new workers and attract new faces and recruit people, but sometimes we ought to be thinking about and acting about the workers that's been here 10, 15, 20 years. And that's why this working group is going to be so important. I've gotten commitments, a firm commitment from the chief and the director, that we're going to get data to try to do whatever we can to come back and make this as equitable as possible. No legislation or no policy always is without bumps and bruises, this one is no exception. But this is only the first step of a broader conversation that this council really needs to have. And the only reason we didn't move it forward on the broader conversation is because, quite frankly, we would have probably been here and stayed the night, and still would have had another debate in the morning about this, because it's kind of complicated, and, but there's a lot of good points and a lot of commitment behind this, so I wanted to set the table for why this working group is so important. And I don't want to underscore Councilwoman House's theory, and what she truly, strongly believes in equity, and how we make sure that everybody has skin in the game. And I know at the right time, she's going to be very vocal about her feelings on this, and how she feels we should move forward. So I want to make sure that I set the stage for everybody, so that we know how this conversation has transpired, okay? So, that being said, I'm going to give Councilwoman House the anchor leg, but I do have Councilman McCormick, or you done, Councilman Slife? I do have Councilman McCormick, I have Councilman Polensick, Councilman Jones, Councilman Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. Want to thank the two, our two colleagues, House and Slife, for your efforts on this administration as well. To me, for all the obvious reasons that were stated around giving our folks the time that they need and should have with their children, I don't know how you recruit people without this. I mean, quite frankly, at the city of Cleveland, so many other companies, organizations are implementing these policies, or have these policies in order to effectively recruit, especially in this labor market. So in addition to everything that was already said that I won't repeat, why it's good in general, I think this is critical for the city to be able to recruit talent, to serve the residents of the city of Cleveland. So fully support this legislation. Mr. Chairman, without objection, my colleagues would like to be added to this as well, like five lines down, so we know that they did it, but I'm supportive of it, and I put like five dots down there, just kind of supporting over here. But no, I really appreciate the hard work of our colleagues to get this done, and it's the right thing to do, it's good for people, but it's also good for the overall strategy of the city of Cleveland to recruit and retain. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please add me as a sponsor to this as well, if you could. Thank you. All right. Councilman Mike Polensick?
Thank you.
And then Councilman Joe Jones, Kevin Conwell.
Thank you, my, Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, and even though I know Councilman Slife is planning on having more children, I just have another, I still have a question.
On that, on that point, on that point, on that point, my, on that point, my wife may disagree, but elected officials don't qualify for this policy.
He's planning ahead, he's planning ahead. So even though this is a, I believe, a very good piece, and I too would like my name added to it, because again, there's a lot of folks and people who talk about supporting families, but at the end of the day, especially a lot of those clowns down in Columbus, but at the end of the day, they don't. So, but for every action, this is basic physics, for every action, there's a reaction. So have you, has the administration calculated any cost factor?
Through the chair to the councilman, we have looked at kind of, in general, how much time, you know, someone would take off historically, and what kind of leave they're using. It's really hard to know exactly what the cost would be, because typically we don't hire a temporary employee, we don't hire a replacement while someone's out. So to the extent there's additional costs, there might be some overtime that we incur when someone's out, but even then, our overtime records don't indicate why somebody worked overtime. And then, you know, there could be annual leave that would otherwise have been used.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we would have an idea if someone took sick time, or whatever the case may be, vacation.
Yeah, and sick time, unless someone retires, sick time doesn't get paid out. So in the ordinary course, we generally are not paying anything on accrued sick time. I want to say the average separation payment on, for annual leave, when someone leaves, is around $2,000, $1,500. And so, you know, there might be a slight uptick in those average payments, but we're only talking about 100 to 130 employees a year, so it's minimal.
So based on what has been said to date so far on this piece of legislation, you don't see it having a major financial implication for the general fund?
Through the chair, no.
Okay, well, that's, because I think, whatever we do here at the table, we always have to look at that. I think that's part of our responsibility. So now, Councilman Slife can go ahead and have the rest of those kids, okay? So I support the legislation. Thank you, and I ask my name to be added. Thank you.
Thank you. And, but just on that point, one of the things that we are going to have to calculate in that working group, is we need to understand if and when we have hired temporary workers, and how much are we paying temporary workers if we have to cover something. And that's one of the reasons why the other half of this has not been fleshed out yet, because we still have to work through some of that data and some of those details in order to make sure that we have a responsible piece and have something that we all can get behind, okay? All right. I have Councilman Joe Jones, Councilman Kevin Conwell. I got you closing it out. Councilwoman House, to close it out. Uh, I can't hear you, but let me hear you start. See if it hits. No. Could you give him that mic, Councilman Hairston, or? All of them. Well, you might need to come right here if you could, Councilman.
You know, every time I see Councilmember Slife, he does a good job being a father, and father-son bonding, and working with his kid, and exposing things, so, you know, I'm not surprised this is from you. I see you doing that, and that's a cool thing, man. You're an engaged dad, you're an engaged parent. And I remember we were going out of town, you said, nope, I got to stay and be with my kid, Kev, you know, and that's important, you know, because that's how, you know, just by watching dad, man, and just by fathers and families together, those kind of things means a lot. So I understand the parenting piece that you're doing and things. Here's one piece with the legislation. I like it, I love the legislation, but the culture, your culture of some of your directors and some of your managers, because we got to get the work done, we got to get the work done. You got to be able to train the managers and the directors about prenatal care also, you know, when a mother, when a mother has a takeoff and take her, and go to the hospital, dealing with this prenatal care. And so the manager or the other workers, especially if there's, if it's a new worker, will have an attitude, and they'll get upset. And then they'll make the mother feel like, and some of them will do it, not all, we got to make sure that we train. You don't want to make the mother feel... You don't want to make the mother feel like, oh man, I can't take off of work, because you're making them choose between their child and work. Morale goes bad, and then the, the mother is a nurturer, she's going through a, through a lot, and when you, you uh, make them feel like that, then that's a bad thing. So you, you could push legislation, just like pushing affirmative action or civil rights bills, just because we push it, but if we don't put people in that culture, and we have a culture of not understanding what's going on, that's not a good thing. And so the mother have a baby, later on, um, she goes through a lot, I mean, a, a great deal of lot, and that mother gives up a whole lot, her, her um, when she gives birth, you know, like um, the dental and the eyes and everything and emotional, and we know that she had to take the baby to the hospital, sometimes the baby may have, whatever the case may be, maybe asthma, maybe um, after, and the, and your employee, your employer is used to seeing you get off work, but you gotta take the baby to the hospital a lot, and you gotta run to the hospital, but then the mother don't have, feels like, if I take the baby, it's gonna count against me anyway, although you have legislation here. You see what I'm saying? Although you have the legislation right here. And then also, not only the baby, the mother have to look out for herself too, because she has to go there, it could be whatever, emotional, whatever, because those things happen, but if you don't have a boss to understand that, or people to make her feel guilty, that's not a good thing. So you gotta look at the culture. You could push the legislation, but side by side with culture, you gotta do them both together. And you say you want more people to come to work here, but they will not come if we don't know the way. If we don't know the way as uh, managers, and especially as men, because we don't know. You know, so we gotta know the way, you have to make those managers and directors understand as leaders, and not make the uh, mother feel bad, or the father from taking off, because you don't know, there's individual things that's going on. The pregnancy or what's going on in the household could be different than what's going on over here in another household. So it's not one size fits all. It's not one size that fit all in the legislation. So you, you got paid leave, but you gotta let them know that you know the way. I know, because I, I pioneered the fatherhood movement back in the eighties and nineties, and took it to a national level, and we would sit around and talk about these things way before we move ahead to right now. So we want to do, we want to do that on paper, and I see a lot of times, we pass legislation just because it's on paper, don't mean it's going to be executed unless we make sure that it's executed, and then the managers, if they go in a different direction or make someone feel bad, we need to be able to um, uh, step in and coaching council that manager or director at that moment, to teach them an aha moment, no, you need to go in this direction for this mother. You know, you, you see what I'm saying? Because she can't feel bad about, about that, and sometimes you'll lose people emotionally. So it's the behavior and the culture of the system that must work simultaneously with this great piece of legislation that you guys are, um, that you guys are pushing. And, and that's just my say on, on that piece. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I'm going to. Bring up now, Councilwoman House, and if we could, give her this microphone.
Close.
We got you.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, um, and to my colleagues. First and foremost, I want to give a huge shout out to my colleague, uh, Councilman Slife. Uh, Councilman Slife has been doing this uh, for years, uh, prior to this administration, and I am very grateful that he has allowed me to come along, um, as I had actually been, you know, working in this in my prior, prior life. Um, when we think about paid parental leave, um, this is something that um, we know it is a part of a family dynamic, it is inevitable, it happens for some, and to be able to uh, ensure that we are supporting workers goes a very long way, and then showing people that you don't just talk about supporting families, but you do it in a very real way. Um, and very excited that we are, we have an actual plan put forth uh, to actually make sure we're looking at the F in family and medical leave. Um, those are very exciting things here for the city of Cleveland, and so looking forward to working with my colleagues as we move forward, uh, ensuring that we are creating the dynamics in the city of Cleveland to ensure that families are invested in, and actually showing a pathway when it comes to uh, policy and legislation that is happening in Columbus. One of the biggest criticisms that happened and things, the reason why we can't get things done in Columbus is because we don't get it done in local municipalities. So this is a way and actually a pathway forward to demonstratably show people that you can not only have paid parental leave, but you can have paid family leave, and you can be a thriving city. So really looking forward to, um, as we get, getting this work done, and again, thanks you to uh, Councilman Slife for letting me tag on to this. Thank you.
Thank you. And a couple of things I just want to underscore, thank you so much, Councilwoman, and um, I just want to make sure that um, you did hear that Councilman Slife has started working in this in the prior administration, um, so he's been a mainstay and been on this like a, a, a dog on a bone, so uh, just want to make sure everybody knows that. And then I'd want to make sure that I reiterate, it is going to be extremely important, everybody, to really get to learn this. Councilwoman um, House has spent an enormous amount of time with me the last couple of weeks, helping me understand about how it needs to be equitable for long time workers, and in order for us to show some fairness to the workers, it's going to be critical uh, for us to really get involved with that work group. Um, once again, the only reason we didn't try to amend and put for her piece, which I want to commend her, she backed away uh, for the good of the council, is because we really need to take the requisite amount of time to really make sure that every council member understands the intricacies of this, and we need time to get the data, we need time to make sure that we can analyze this the right way. I've had a couple of conversations, subsequent conversations with Chief Abu Nama, and also the administration, uh, the chiefs and everybody, and they have given me and this council a commitment that we are going to make sure that we look for a path forward to have expanded family medical leave. We have a lot of people in this city who are taking care of parents, have to take care of themselves, because sometimes they have, of ailments and illnesses themselves. Um, and we want to make sure that whatever policy we have in place, that it is the best policy, not just for the people we're attracting new, but for some of the workers that have sacrificed and been here for a long time. So I'd encourage you to really spend time to talk with Councilwoman House, so you can understand her position, so that we can make sure as we move forward, us as a body uh, can own this uh, issue as well, okay? All right, thank you once again, Councilwoman House and everybody else. Councilman Joe Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had to step out there for a quick second, um, and uh, appreciate the consideration. Um, I, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, uh, my colleague Charlie Slife uh, called uh, to talk about the program and, and, and what and how it would impact the city of Cleveland, and, and I'm also appreciative at the fact that, you know, I see this as one of those bright spots, those diamonds that's added to the proposition of not only retaining our existing employees in the city of Cleveland, um, but having the capacity to attract uh, new uh, employees to the city of Cleveland to deal with the great task uh, that we have before us, and, and that is to providing quality customer service and public service to our, to our citizens. And so um, kudos to uh, Charles Slife uh, for your commitment and dedication, and also kudos for the administration for seeing this as, as well as working with the council as a whole in partnership uh, as it relates to um, this particular piece here. And um, Mr. Chairman, you know, I know that all of the council members are, are going to, I presume, we're going to add everyone to the list, if there's no objections uh, on this, uh, but just.
Say it again.
Right. Well, my suggestion is all the colleagues of the council uh, would, would, would appreciate their names being added, um, because this benefits everyone. And um, and I don't know if, Mr. Chairman, moving forward in the future, you know, those who are the sponsors and co-sponsors of initiating legislation, maybe have their names boded along with all the other council members who, or names are added, so that they'll know who sponsored that particular piece of legislation uh, moving forward in the future, and then who co-sponsored that piece of legislation. Uh, and that's just a suggestion here, I think this is a great piece here, and uh, kudos to the administration and kudos to Charlie Slife uh, for making it a priority to help families in the city of Cleveland.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other hands, uh, ordinance number six thirty dash twenty twenty-three, as amended, uh, stands approved. Once again, can you please make sure? Thank you. Um, I do, I do. I do, I do want to make sure that there are a couple of council members that uh, did want to make sure that they were on there, so we'll make sure we get that done, okay? Everybody? So can we make sure that all council members without objection are added to ordinance number six thirty dash twenty twenty-three? And I just want to make it clear, um, there's probably going to be a lot of press on this, and there'll probably be a lot of interest in this, and um, I believe in the shared credit model, and I want to be, make sure that the administration, everybody else, gives Charlie Slife and the entire council, especially what we are going to pivot to with Councilwoman House, to make sure that people understand that we are taking other steps to examine having expanded, um, expanded family leave as well, okay? We just want to make sure we understand it more, okay? Thank you, everybody. All right. Okay, I got a couple more pieces that we're going to introduce and uh, and hear this evening. Uh, so first is ordinance number seven nine eight dash twenty twenty-three by Councilmember Griffin for departmental request for passage July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, an emergency ordinance to amend sections one and four of ordinance number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-three passed January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three relating to directing a portion of the city's coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund payment to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts by improving the public sector capacity and workforce with respect to building an IT platform to track and report on data in the city's three one one system and to make necessary investments in broadband infrastructure to strengthen city cybersecurity and to supplement the ordinance by adding new sections four A and four H relating to contracts for advertising and marketing. Uh, who is going to be here for the administration? Is anybody else going to be here for the administration? We'll come back to that. Thank you. Next one is an uh, ordinance number seven seven six dash twenty twenty-three, an emergency ordinance um, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request for passage July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to amend section seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-five, and thirty-eight of ordinance number one ninety-four dash twenty twenty-one passed March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Ms. Long will be joined at the table with Mr. Morales, okay? Thank you.
Through the chair to councilmembers, um, we are requesting the addition of some classifications as well as pay ban adjustments, so I'll just go through the sections as they're noted. Uh, section seventeen, we are adding an industrial.
Proceed.
We're adding an industrial maintenance technician, um, that is due to the collective bargaining agreement for machinists, so that classification has been added to the contract. Um, section twenty-two, for the uh, care contract, they are um, condensing the classification, so they're removing the paramedics, one, two, and three, and there's just going to be one classification of paramedic. Section twenty-three, we are um, actually increasing the pay ban for the EMT supervisor. Section thirty-five, we are adding a project specialist. I just want to give you some background information on this classification, this is going to be a new, newly created classification, is it, it is an entry level classification, um, so that we can expand our candidate pool, so this uh, will help. And then section thirty-eight, increasing the pay ban for the deputy commissioner of emergency medical services. So there's some differential between this classification and the EMT supervisor.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other questions regarding seven seven six dash twenty twenty-three? I knew I was about to say, Councilman Casey is usually my uh, hawk on uh, pay bands.
Just a, just a quick, just a quick question on this. Does this have, uh, does this piece of legislation here have anything to do with any ratification of contracts from the unions?
Not this piece, no, it does not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Councilman Harsh.
Yeah, through the chair, I don't have the microphone working. I was just curious, why, why did the city will make EMT one, two, three?
That, that's through, through their contract, they decided to combine the classifications into just one classification of paramedic.
So this was negotiated?
This is trying to be a learning moment for me, because I know that we don't get involved in these negotiations, so this is being brought to council as a result of the negotiation between the union and administration, and that resulted in a state change.
Through the chair to councilman, that is correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, ordinance number seven seven six dash twenty twenty-three uh, will be heard for consideration by the full council this evening, okay? All right, next up is ordinance number seven ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-three by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request for passage July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, an emergency ordinance approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Cleveland Police Patrolmen's Association, CPPA, civilian personnel, and to amend section ten of ordinance number one nine four dash twenty twenty-one passed March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Director?
Through the chair to councilmembers, this is for ratification of uh, CPPA, Cleveland Police Patrolmen's Association. The classifications affected are bilingual communication specialist, police radio dispatcher, police safety aide and safety telephone operator. There are approximately ninety-four employees uh, in this union, so uh, requesting ratification and uh, amendment to the pay ban ordinance.
Okay. And once again, just for edification of everybody, this is negotiated and agreed upon between the administration and the labor unions. This is not a new negotiation, this is basically what they agreed upon, right?
Correct.
And it expires when, twenty twenty-four?
That is correct, chairman.
Okay. Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to our commission, commissioner, right?
Director.
Director, I'm sorry. Um, where does this put us at in far as having all of the contracts ratified?
Through the chair to Councilman Casey, we are at fifteen currently.
And there's thirty-two?
Through the chair to Councilman, thirty-one.
Thirty-one? All right, so we're at fifteen to thirty-one. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, uh, seven seven dash twenty twenty-three stands approved, and will be considered by the entire body this evening, yes?
I'm excited to hear your statement, because you know, somebody may see your face here at the table, Mr. Morales, uh, he comes from Cuyahoga County, where I once served, and I can tell you, I smiled, I lit up, and I saw him in the hallway. You talk about a very thorough, a very knowledgeable, a very, you know, consistent individual, that's who you picked up. I'm happy that the city was able to uh, to grab hold of him and bring him over uh, to work with us. You know, he led all of our negotiating, the county's negotiation efforts uh, during my time there, and then he had worked, and it's only been praises for, for Mr. Morales during his, uh, time he served in the county, so I'm happy to see you, uh, see you here. I'm sure that other members are supposed to get to know you, they'll be equally as happy that you joined us in uh, the Cleveland City, or City of Cleveland.
Thank you so much, Miss. Welcome, welcome here, and uh, you'll, you know, if Councilman is giving you that kind of uh, kudos, um, it's a good thing to be at the table, okay? All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Long.
Thank you.
Uh, I believe Chief Abu Nama is going to come up, and I'll read this into the record once again. Ordinance number seven nine eight dash twenty twenty-three uh, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request uh, to be considered for passage this evening, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, an emergency ordinance to amend sections one and four of ordinance number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-three passed January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three relating to. sections 1 and 4 of ordinance number 88-2023 passed January 30th, 2023, relating to directing a portion of the city's coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund payment to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts by improving the public sector capacity and workforce with respect to building an IT platform to track and report on data in the city's 311 system, and to make necessary investments in broadband infrastructure to strengthen city cybersecurity, and to supplement the ordinance by adding new sections 4A and 4B relating to contracts for advertising and marketing. Chief?
Yes, through the chair to the council, apologies for the mix-up a few minutes ago. Uh, so this, as the council president just read, is an amendment of an ordinance adopted by council in January with respect to the 311 modernization, and it is, uh, just adding authority to engage a project manager and a firm to help us implement the changes to the system, train staff on the new system, uh, et cetera. Uh, it is not an increase in the dollars appropriated for the effort, so it's staying within the initial appropriation for the project, just adding additional contracting authority within that appropriation.
Okay. All right, uh, just real quick question, sure. Question about cybersecurity? How is this going to help with cyber, cybersecurity? I'm trying to make sure I understand how the two are tied into each other.
Through, through the chair, I believe there are some, uh, network security enhancements being made in connection with the 311 system, uh, modernization. Uh, it also is one of the hooks under the final ARPA guidelines, uh, put out by the U.S. Department of Treasury, as an authorized use of ARPA funds. So it was an effort in the legislation to connect it to the eligibility rules, uh, provided by the U.S. Department of Treasury.
Okay. And this is more of a policy, is not a dollar amount attached?
Through the chair, correct. There are no new dollars in connection with this ordinance, it's just, uh, additional contracting authority within the appropriation already made by council.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman House?
Yeah, through the chair, I got a question. Just a quick question. Who called 311?
Through the, through the chair, uh, 311 is part of the, uh, division of ITS, within the Finance Department.
So she, you person is all right?
Through, through the chair, ultimately, yes. Um, I believe, uh, the staff who report to Rick Roscoe, uh, who reports to Commissioner Kim Roy Wilson.
Kim Roy Wilson.
Okay, Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to the, to our director, what was the original amount of the allocation?
Through the chair, that is a great question.
All right, Mr. Chairman, to Councilwoman House, how much was the original allocation? I knew, and I knew that too. Um, so, um, Mr. Chairman, the CFO, what will, what's going to be different from the original to, to adding, to adding this aspect of it? And more, more specifically, um, what type of marketing, branding, and advertising is going to be done? And is it for the 311 system, or is it for any other entity aside from the 311 system?
Through, through the chair, so anything in here would be related specifically to the 311 system. Uh, you know, my, I believe this was, uh, this is the result of the, uh, winning respondent to the RFP for the software provider, um, was really just a software provider and not an organization that was, uh, that had the capacity to do these other things. And so the cost came in a little lower than we anticipated, which is why there's excess cash left over from the initial appropriation. So really, we just then needed the authority to enter into a contract with a second entity to do these kind of project implementation, um, tasks, so that folks internally know how to use the system, and then also we can, um, do some marketing to the, to our residents so that they know, you know, what the new system will be like, how to use it, how to interact with it differently than just, uh, picking up the phone, because I, my understanding is this will have sort of, um, an, an online component where 311 requests can be provided in writing, uh, which is just a little different than the current system.
And then, Mr. Chairman, to the CFO, 311 is open for city employees who are operating it for what hours?
Through the chair, I'd have to confirm, I believe, 8:30 to 5:00.
And then, Mr. Chairman, the CFO, who operates it after 5:00?
Through the chair, uh, the United Way.
Right.
Uh, through a, a contract approved by council earlier this year.
Right. And then is any of this, um, implementation process going to be given to, Mr. Chairman, the CFO, is going to be given to those United Way employees as well? I mean, are they included in part of this training that the new, whatever it is you're going to be doing with this? I want to make sure that the United Way employees are involved in that as well, because what we're seeing is, you know, we've got people at 311 who've been there for years and know this, the city inside and out, right? And then after 5 o'clock, I'm glad we have somebody to answer the phone, but the knowledge, uh, falls off after 5 o'clock. And it's not the fault of the people who are sitting there after 5 o'clock, they just don't know what they don't know. They don't know how to navigate the system. So I think there's a frustration going there. So I want to assure that whatever implementations or training or anything else is going to happen to, uh, the people who are contracted, that we have contracted with after 5 o'clock as well.
Through, through the chair, yes, uh, the, the three, the United Way staff that carry, that conducts the after hour, uh, call-taking, uh, they will be, uh, trained. And then, of course, you know, as, as, you know, United Way staff is new to this, and I suspect as they continue doing the work, they'll get more adept at navigating, uh, and, you know, part, as part of this will also be assessing their, the tools that they have, kind of what policies and procedures can we give them, so that when the after-hours folks are answering the phone, they have as much information available to them as is possible, so that they can actually navigate the system, um, better over time.
And Mr. Chairman, the CFO, do we have any oversight over those United Way employees who are answering the phone after hours?
Through the chair, it's, uh, through the terms of the contract that we entered into, which has kind of, uh, I don't, I don't recall specifically, but there are, um, kind of milestones and deliverables that the United Way has to hit to satisfy its obligations under the contract.
And one last question, Mr. Chairman, the CFO. You, you don't know what the staff turnover ratio is at the United Way portion of, of it, do you?
Through, through the chair, I do not.
Do we follow that? Do we track it?
I can, through the chair, I can certainly talk to the commissioner and get that information.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other questions, oh, Councilwoman Spencer?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just have a follow-up, I wanted to make sure I understood, um, and I'm sorry if I missed this previously, the delivery timeline for the updated 311 system, and if we know anything further about that. I think at one point, um, we were hopeful that it would already be in place by now, spring 2023.
Through the, through the chair, I don't know the, the specific timeline. I, I can recall that we finalized the contract with the software provider about four weeks ago, four or five weeks ago.
Councilwoman House has a point, I think.
Councilwoman House?
Uh, we, we might go ahead and get into, uh, the first half.
Okay. I know this is, we're all anxiously awaiting, uh, these changes, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions, ordinance number 798-2023 stands approved. All right, this, uh, we're going to convene in one hour. The team has said that they need one hour. Uh, they've asked if we can get there at, uh, 5 o'clock, so actually, I'm cutting it down to 49 minutes. But if, uh, we can get reconvened in the chambers across the hall by 5 o'clock, that would be great, in the chambers across the hall by 5 o'clock. Once again, actually, just make it 5:10, let's just give them the hour, 5:10, 5:10, we will convene across the hall. This committee of finance, diversity, equity, and inclusion is adjourned. Thank you.